Seven o'clock. I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty five at seven P M. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over two hundred years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands is an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We have thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk Schmelzer, would you take the role?
Commissioner Alseger?
Here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Persha Bacher?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Skelitzki?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Yeah.
Mayor Wingard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, um, we had an election last Tuesday. Um, and so we will be administering the oath of office to our new Commissioner Skelitzki.
Please raise your right hand and then repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I
I do solemnly swear that I, Ryan Skelitzki.
Will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the state of Michigan.
And the state of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
And the Charter of the City of Mount Pleasant.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
On behalf of all the citizens of the city.
On behalf of all the citizens of the city.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into proclamations and presentations. First on the agenda is the presentation on the twenty twenty five housing reports by planning and community development intern Yu Yang Ding.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to say quickly that Yu Yang has been working with us for uh twelve weeks and has done amazing work. Very happy uh with the outcome and we're still drafting the report. But today you're gonna see a presentation from him about the content that we intend to publish. And we welcome uh general questions or feedback. Uh if not now, maybe afterwards. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. Can you see the slides? Yeah, I'll be presenting our current twenty twenty five housing report. Uh first, the agenda of the presentation. First, I'll introduce the goals of the report and then discuss housing options, housing affordability, neighborhood opportunities, and in the end, recommendations. First, the this report is to better understand the current housing conditions, challenges, and opportunities. It focuses on housing options and prices. It serves as a guidance for future developments and policies. It is made for policymakers, real estate agents, and also local residents. It it aligns with the twenty fifty master plan. First topics, housing options for all. First, I want to uh introduce the changing population for of our city. In the last fifteen years, we can see our city's population has been constantly decreasing because of the reduction in C M U enrollment. Uh also, we can see a consistent increase in our non-C M U residents. Uh in twenty twenty four, we have about ninety nine thousand five hundred non-C M U residents and in twenty twenty nine, we expect to have ten thousand six hundred eighty one non-C M U residents and twenty thousand sixty eight, six hundred eighty one residents in total. Despite our decrease in total population, we also s- we s- see a increase in households numbers. This is because the um general trend of more and more single person households and also aging people. Uh in twenty twenty four, we had about eight thousand households in t- in total. Among these households, twenty twenty percent of them are s- were student households. Forty-eight percent of them are working age households and th- about thirty-two percent of them were senior households. By twenty twenty nine, there will be an increase of hundred and sixty-six households in total. And we'll see a increase in both uh wor- working age ha- households and senior households, but a reduction in student households. Also, if we look at these housing units by type, forty percent of them are houses and thirty-six percent of them are multi-unit complexes like apartments. And twenty-four percent of them are other housing types like duplexes, mixed-use, triplexes, fourplexes. When we look at households by number of units, sixty sixty-five percent of them are renter occupied, while thirty-five percent are of then are owner occupied. But we, but if we look at them by number of lots or parcels, but sixty-three percent of them are owner occupied and thirty-seven of them percent of them are renter occupied. Uh we look at the previous studies and surveys, we found two major issues on housing age and conditions. Um we have, we have older owner occupied housing units built prior to nineteen seventy more than that of states and county. We also have more incomplete plumbing or kitchen in renter occupied housing when compared to the county and state. From January eleven, uh from January first, twenty twenty two to March nineteen twenty twenty five, six hundred and nine house homes were sold in the city with a median price at one hundred seventy thousand dollars. As of March nineteen twenty twenty five, there were thirty-nine homes available for sale with a median price at two hundred twenty thousand dollars. And from this time between during this time, the prices increased about twenty-nine percent. And during the same time, the state of Michigan increased about twenty-five percent and the whole nation increased about fourteen percent. Among the in these um current for sale housing units, units, we have availability rate of one point two per p- percent. And the month's month's supply of inventory, two point five. This means uh it takes about two point five months for the market to sell these house. In a healthy, well-balanced market, the availa- availability rate should be around two to three percent and M S I should be four to six months. This indicates a seller's market, which means home buyers have to pay more prices, more money to purchase the same quality house in a normal market. Um in May twenty twenty five, Bowen National Research conducted a contacted an online survey and they surveyed about fifteen hundred units for for conventional housing. And they found the vacancy rate for market rate units were only three point nine percent. And they also found for non-conventional housing, the vacancy rate was zero point three percent. Once again, in a healthy, well-balanced market, the rate should be around, should be four to six percent. The reth- the research showed that the the city of Mount Pleasant expected to have at least nine hundred and sixty-two for rental housing gap and but at least five hundred and sixty-seven for sale housing. For Isabella County, the gap is up to one thousand, one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six for rental and two thousand six hundred ninety-five for for sale housing. Here's the employment information for the city. Within the city, within the city limits, there are about fifteen thousand jobs slash employees um with the top three industries. First, as uh educational services, we have C M U, Make- Michigan College, and followed by the healthcare and social assistance um with the McLaren Central Michigan Hospital as a as an example. And and third is accommodation and food services. On a typical day, we have about twelve thousand people coming uh workers coming to the city from elsewhere, which means we have more jobs than workers. These workers come from um uh nearby places like Unit Township, Sheffer, Whitman, Alma, Claire. And uh we have, we also have workers lead the city to places like Isabelle County, Midland City, Saginaw, Lansing, and Grand Rapids. In other word, for every two people who live and work in Mount Pleasant, there are twelve people live elsewhere and commute to the city to work. All of this is to say the city has the potential to capture these workers if we provide enough housing options and appropriate affordable housing units. Here is some, here are some examples of um housing types a city does have. And we should in- embrace in more housing diversity because they're more affordable for buyers and more efficient in land use. Here we have a triplex and fourplex. We also have housing types that the city currently don't doesn't have, like a parking neighborhood. Here's example in Seattle, Washington, and an urban townhome in Vancouver, Canada. These pocket neighborhoods are suitable for seniors who want who want to downsize or start or for starter homes to enjoy a vibrant neighborhood atmosphere. We also have a mixed-use building in Ann Arbor, Michigan, and the example of a lift bashwork building in Atlanta, Georgia. Second topic is affordable housing for all, more specifically, affordable for households with less than eighty percent median household income and attainable for households with eighty percent to hundred and twenty percent median household income. Uh I'll do a lecture here. Um median household income of the city is forty sou- forty-six thousand hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Affordable housing means um when a household spends no more than thirty percent of its gross income on total housing costs, including rental mortgage, utilities, taxes, and insurance. If you spend more than thirty percent of our income, you're cost burdened. If it's, if you spend more than fifty percent, you're severely cost burdened. Attainable housing means of are affordable for middle-income households typically earning eighty percent to hundred and twenty percent median household income. This, we also uh sometimes use uh uh income published by the Department of Housing and Urban Development to um measure the affordable housing. Here we have the median family income for the coun- for the county. And we measure the affordable housing based on the number of based on incomes with the number of household, number of person in household, households. Here is the distribution of households by income um in the city. We can see that from the lower ends, in the lower ends, there are increasing high we ha- we expect to have a reduction in lower ends of income and an increase in higher ends in the income, which means we have, we'll have a more balanced income distribution, but still a large portion of population earning less than hundred and twenty percent median household income. Here is the current Mount Pleasant apartment rental housing costs. Um the pri- the rent for one bedroom, one bathroom is nine hundred and seventeen per month. And for two bedroom, two bathrooms, the rent is nine hundred ninety-eight dollars per month. And if you want to afford these rents below or the salaries, the minimum annual salaries you have to earn to require to afford these rents, so uh about thirty-six thousand dollars and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And besides are the example o- o- occupations with this annual salary. Here is the current for sale housing costs. Uh our house is about uh two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And the mortgage is about fifteen one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars per month. And if, and if you you want to afford the mortgage and to buy a house, you have to earn at least sixty-two thousand eight hundred and forty dollars per year, which is more more than hundred and twenty percent of mid- median household income, which means we have, we we must um have more affordable housing in the city. And the previous twenty nineteen housing report has informations like population estimates, dwelling units, missing middle units, average year build. And they visualize it, visualize it by neighborhood and for each neighborhood, they have, they include these information. For our new twenty twenty five housing report, we consider adding information like density, vacant parcels, vacant parcel development potential, like how many uh more housing can we per can we create based on these vacant parcels and also parcels eligible for rezoning. This year, our C M U students also worked with the city and did a research on mapping the neighborhoods. What they found was that um our neighborhoods don't have names. Uh so they found city features such as parks, commercial buildings, vacant lots were not as part of neighborhoods considered based on the opinion of our citizens and residents. Such perception may oppose infill housing or redevelopment of vacant land because they don't see our the land as unused. But they view it as a buffer, as a green space, or even a visual break. If they don't feel a connection to the land, they may oppose density or new uses that feel imposed or unfamiliar. In the end, we call for both the, we call for increasing both the production and quality of housing in the city to increase, to ensure housing quality for living in while ensuring affordable affordability through a financial support. We have programs like Neighborhood Enhancement Program, um Chill Program, and through B, Property Maintenance, based on International Property Maintenance Code, code enforcement, and also ru- rental license annual inspections. Well, we also want to increase housing stocks for more options and affordability through a financial support. Programs like Employer Assisted Assisted Housing Program, T I F, Neighborhooding and Enterprise Zones, and Pilot. And through B, zoning reform and policy review for more efficient land use and a smoother development approval process. Thank you. If you have any questions, I have to answer.
Are there any questions from members of the commission?
I have an observation. House mayor. Um you pull up the slide where you're talking about the rental.
This one?
Yes, where you said the rental for one bedroom, one bath is nine hundred and seventeen dollars a month. Yeah, that one.
Hmm.
Okay, so did you have a sense of who might be the primary renters for these apartments?
Um I would say based on our like uh, anyone could be like below with a low income.
Hmm.
And although they are, we know they are maybe cost burdened and maybe spend more than thirty percent of their income to rent these places.
Okay, so and and can I just follow?
Hmm.
So part of the reason why I'm asking this is because this shows up in my students' writing.
Hmm.
So one of the assignments are the for the writing at the end of the semester is to look at problems. And guess what the top problem is for Mount Pleasant? That. That.
You mean the high rent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That Mount Pleasant is, housing in Mount Pleasant is unaffordable. It's too high for them. I'm talking about C M U students who are writing papers. This is their top problem. So if we're looking at this, it says to me that students cannot afford that because they're not making thirty-six thousand a year.
Yeah.
Which means, okay, so you know, um and most of them are not living on campus. Where do they live? Did your study reveal anything about that? The a correlation between this and perhaps, you know, students, you know, where the students are living or people who don't make that amount of money where they live in.
Yeah, so they may not live in like one bedr- one bedroom, one bathroom.
Hmm.
Um homes, houses, and they're living like a, you having units with rooming, like for example, living with other students and also maybe uh four bedroom, two bathroom, four bedroom, one bathroom, because we also see a I talked about the our major issue for hmm uh renter occupied housing, we have incomplete plumbing or kitchen. And that also um same for the bathroom.
Hmm, okay.
Uh so so in that case, the rent will be lower.
Uh huh.
Further than to four.
Uh huh, okay. I, sorry, go ahead.
Uh am I correct to understand that in order for a firefighter to afford a two-bedroom apartment, he would have to moonlight as a retail salesperson or a healthcare support worker just to afford a, an apartment with a bedroom for their children or something along those lines?
Yes, and that salary is from the U S Census, so it's a median median um annual salary for the city.
Hmm. So I I mean, this is important in light of the decision that we made a few weeks ago about, you know, housing. You know, so for me, this is significant. It says to us, we've got a housing problem. And if we are to serve the people who work here, who wanna work here and live here, we're going to need to do something. And you're also saying that we don't have spaces where, you know, we can even develop. So in other words, we're searching, we're stuck, and this becomes urgent for me. You know, so I appreciate this presentation because it underscores the problem that we have with housing in this particular city.
Commissioner Bush?
I am curious. I I know we we talked about some comparisons to other cities, but I I'm it's my understanding that we're probably not alone in this, in this issue nationwide. There are other communities that are addressing this issue at various stages of addressing this issue. Um would you say that's accurate?
Yeah, uh housing affordability issue and also the housing stock issues that like national and also the state level trend like issue.
So it, so it's fantastic that a city like Mount Pleasant is is getting on top of it and working with talented pe- young people like yourself. I really appreciate this report. Because yeah, I mean, we have to be proactive here.
Yeah, I agree.
Other members of the commission? Okay, not seen any. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our second presentation of the evening. We'll be receiving a presentation on twenty twenty five mid-year goals and objectives progress by city manager Aaron DeSantis.
Ryan, good evening, everyone. Just gonna run through a brief update on our goals and objectives. So this is for twenty twenty five. We have our first and second quarter updates that are in the spreadsheet. As I've done in years past, I've color-coded on the left-hand side in yellow, those are still in progress goals and objectives. In green, those that have been completed, and you'll see that in this report, typically I've used in the past red to indicate those that we've met some sort of a significant obstruction. And I'm happy to report that we haven't received any kind of fee uh like pushback on any of our goals and objectives. We've been able to move forward with a lot of these. Uh unfortunate not, unfortunately not to be able to show the whole thing as well. See how far I can do this. Yeah, if it goes that far, unfortunately, then I can't see the other column. Let me try. All right, well, that work, that's about as big as I couldn't get those columns. Right. So first off, ensure that all city departments consistently meet established service standards and benchmarks to provide efficient and effective services to residents and visitors. We met as the senior management team and we had come up with a number of different metrics for various divisions to try to benchmark year over year some of the services that we provide. And so you see in public safety, we came up with a metric for average emergency response time, number of um writ uh, let's see here. Number of written complaints, um and then complaints per number of calls for service. Um so we have in here, and I just wanna make sure, because Director Laurie is with us today here, on our number for written complaints, that's the number of people that are calling in and complaining to public safety in particular about.
I think that's, that was signed for writing.
I'm sorry.
Written complaints.
Yes.
Written complaints are the number of complaints that have been taken that require paperwork on behalf of the police officer. So a police report, accident report and whatnot. That isn't the number of people complaining.
Correct. I wanted to make sure I had that definition in its entirety for the city commission because clearly we haven't gotten seven hundred some complaints. No, these are the number of um individuals who are are uh looking for services here. And then the complaints per number of calls for service uh per quarter, we break that down on the number of calls per service. And so far in twenty twenty five, we're not And so far in twenty twenty-five, we never received any complaints about service.
No formal written complaints about service, we have had calls of people who weren't entirely happy.
Okay, understood, all right, thank you very much. Public Works meters rotated to date this year, uh, we have nine hundred eighty-one meters rotated as part of our meter rotation program. Signs replaced eighteen, um, and this is for quarter two, my apologies, so, uh, eighteen signs replaced in second quarter. Street sweeping hours, three hundred twenty-two hours in quarter two, sewer backups, we had eight reported to us in quarter two. You can see tree services here as well, one hundred ninety, I know the crew's been working very diligently on some of our tree issues out there. And then lastly valves turned, we had a lot of work that was going on in quarter one of this year, and then that's back down as we focus to other pro- uh, projects as well. Uh, chemical cost per million gallons treated, and then also the kilowatt hour per million gallons treated. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Moore, this is at the water treatment plant, or is this at the WRF?
Uh, I think the kilowatts. Uh, the kilowatt hours per gallon treated is at the WRF and the, uh, chemical cost per million gallons is at the water treatment plant.
Yeah, excellent, thank you very much. And then within the finance division, our material findings within the audit, we did have three that were reported to the city commission at our last meeting. And then the M G F O A reward received, that was received in twenty twenty-five for our previous year. And then we'll seek for that, uh, reward in the following year as well, too. Right. Implement recommendations from the fire study to optimize fire service delivery, enhance emergency response capabilities, and improve overall fire safety within the community. We do have a drafted fire report, though I realize that the link, um, internally it works, though externally unfortunately it does not work, so I'm not able to show you that, uh, but I can certainly send that to the rest of the city commission. But our fire, uh, strategic plan was based off of the fire study that was, uh, completed by the Center for Public Safety Management. And so it's all one hundred percent based on that, so we'll continue to work on the goals of the strategic plan, that strategic plan was set for a five-year timeline. Prioritize proactive maintenance and infrastructure upgrades to ensure the reliable operation of the water distribution system, minimizing disruptions and ensuring access to clean and safe water for residents. Really focused here on our D W S R F program, the bond program that the city commission has been, uh, part of as we've gone through. And so at this point, we're going through the D W S R F process with the state and getting everything finalized. Um, our construction plans have been created and finalized in quarter two. Regularly inspect, repair, and maintain roads and sidewalks throughout the city to enhance safety, accessibility, and mobility for all users. As of quarter two, right now, our sidewalk replacement is complete for this, uh, complete or very near completion for this year. And then street overlays are also well underway. Implement comprehensive asset management practices to effectively maintain cemetery facilities and grounds. Staff ran into some early on issues in quarter one and early quarter two as well, though I'm happy to, uh, report back to the city commission here that we are overcoming some of those issues, so we are moving forward with the implementation of going live with the new cemetery management system known as PONTUM. We're looking at having that live probably closer to the end of this month. Implement targeted recruitment strategies to attract and select highly qualified candidates who possess the skills, qualifications, and values necessary to excel in their respective roles within the organization. And so we just have some hiring statistics here, year-to-date, thirty-five seasonals onboarded, twenty-one from the peak, four interns, ten full-time individuals that we've onboarded, one part-time individual, five recreation assistants, four meter readers, one board review individual, and one city commissioner as well. Develop comprehensive onboarding and training programs for new hires to ensure they receive the necessary knowledge, skills, and resources to perform their duties effectively and integrate seamlessly into the roles and the organizational culture. So this is the focus of our training development intern cohort, for which we have three individuals currently working on this. I'm very happy to report that the early on work that's coming out of this group is, uh, absolutely fantastic. And I tell people this all the time, when new people come on board, typically our training resources are just the individuals that we work with. A supervisor will have to take some time to educate a new employee on how timesheets works. Um, if they're a supervisor working for a division, they'll have to show them how to look up, uh, different things in the general ledger, how to process accounts, um, uh, accounts payable, and also, uh, credit card statements, those kind of things. These are all things now that we're developing into written as well as video training materials, and so far everything is looking very good. Um, this is something I'll probably wanna continue into the future, because it's one of those, as, as you get into it, you start to realize how much more you really need for a comprehensive training program. So, we look forward to continuing this in the future. Build leadership development programs to identify, nurture, and cultivate emerging leaders within the organization, fostering continuity and succession planning to ensure a strong and capable leadership pipeline for the future. So along with our training needs, which we have identified, and some of the materials that are being built up, we plan on implementing those in, uh, be late quarter three and then going into quarter four. We'll be assessing the training afterwards and also identifying how this works for our leadership development programs as well. There's a number of other ideas that the senior management team has identified, including stay interviews that we're talking about, and how we might be able to bring a program like that on board, so, uh, more ideas, uh, to come. And I think in third quarter, we'll probably have, um, a list of some other things aside from our training program development. Implement initiatives to enhance refuse and recycling services, we'd swapped over to Granger Services in quarter one of this year. Um, we haven't noted any major hiccups, I know that there have been some, uh, a few complaints here and there, but for the most part, the system seems to be working very well. In quarter two, we did not receive any formal complaints. Deploy smart me- smart meter technology to enhance service delivery, including real-time monitoring of utility usage, identifying opportunities for energy efficiency and conservation, and providing residents with tools and resources to better understand and manage their utility consumption. So this is a really neat statistic, as of six twenty-four, eighty-six percent of the rotations that we had, uh, scheduled for this year have been completed as of that date. Develop and implement outreach programs to increase citizen engagement and education on key community issues. So, this is twofold, in that one, we have to identify which of these issues that we're communicating to the public uh, need sort of an enhanced education or training to them, and then, uh, trying to design that training from there. So our communications department had noted that in first quarter, they developed an F A Q for trash and recycling, uh, changes related to the change to Granger. In quarter two, they had done one for the parking lot reconstruction projects, and also one on the meter rotation project as well. Conduct a thorough assessment of the city's motor pool operations to identify areas for improvement, such as optimizing vehicle usage, reducing maintenance costs, and implementing fuel-efficient, environmental-friendly practices to enhance the efficiency and sustainability of the city's fleet management. So we're looking at the number of different opportunities we've identified, changes made, those kind of things. We'll be talking tonight about a proposal to swap out six of the trucks over at the, um, Department of Public Works. And so that is one of those, within that fleet, I know we're downsizing some of that fleet, because as of right now, we are very, um, rather overbooked on, on, uh, larger trucks, and we realized that we just don't need that many larger trucks within the fleet, so we are downsizing. So that does meet some of our sustainability goals. Develop and implement a wellhead protection plan ordinance to safeguard the city's drinking water sources from contamination. So our last report, which was at the end of quarter two, is that we were looking to the committee to meet in quarter three of this year. However, the committee hadn't met, and they are proposing actually a resolution which mirrors that of Union Township, Union Township reports some success with their resolution. So we'll be discussing that further this evening. Collaborate with key stakeholders to develop and implement a comprehensive economic development plan that identifies strategic priorities, opportunities for growth, initiatives to attract and best create jobs, and foster economic prosperity. This was one that I remember that I proposed to the city commission during our goals and objectives workshop. And in particular, what I was hoping to do with this is to identify key sites within the city that would be primed for redevelopment, and then try to tack on what incentives would make sense to try to gain the attention of developers. And so, um, this is something we continue to work on, I believe that we will have this to the city commission within the next month as we're just finalizing some of the details of this plan. Review the creation of a dedicated grant writing program within the city to stemically identify, pursue, and secure grant opportunities from various resources. We had done this early, uh, in, uh, actually, it was, uh, late in twenty twenty-four. So we had brought on our grant coordinator in December of twenty twenty-four, and she continues to do really great work for us. Um, and we'll see in this next one, actively seek out and apply for grants from various sources, supplement the city's budget, fund critical projects, initiatives, and reduce reliance on taxpayer funds. We're always looking out for great opportunities out there, and just some of the statistics so far, we applied for four very large, major grants, we were awarded one. We're actively managing three, cause if you recall, we had the chill grant that we had inherited, um, as well as the wrap grant is currently being actively managed by this individual. We've got some really great opportunities on the horizon, I know I've communicated to the city mission in particular about a really great, uh, grant offering from the state of Michigan to try to identify, um, ways that we can keep talent here within the city. And so staff's still working on the application for that, which is due in late September, but I'll be able to give further details to the city commission once those details have really been hammered out. But, uh, the state's offering something like a six-point-nine million dollar program right now, so that's something we definitely wanna jump on. Conduct a comprehensive review of accounting policies and administrative procedures to ensure alignment with regulatory requirements and best practices. Uh, quarter one, we had reviewed two of those policies, and we had changed one quarter two. Staff spent a lot of time working on getting the audit together, and so a lot of our focus was on that. I anticipate that we'll continue to do more of our review of accounting policies, uh, in later quarters of the year. And then lastly, evaluate utility billing fees and policies to ensure sufficient funding is in place to protect public health and maintain critical infrastructure. While we're can keep our rates as affordable as possible, this will be completed in quarter three, and this is completed as part of our budget process. Um, so what we wanna do first, obviously, is identify, uh, what our costs are going to be for the next year. And then obviously, something that's, um, going to be in addition to this is our D W S R F, uh, loan program with the state as well, so that will have an impact in rates. We'll have a better understanding of what that is when the final bids are in, and we actually know how much we are gonna have to bond out, so, um. That is the goals and objectives update for twenty twenty-five, do I have any questions from the city commission?
I have one. Vice Mayor, okay.
So. Manager descents, first of all, thank you for this, it's quite comprehensive, what are your challenges? You didn't think about that?
Yeah, you know, I will say the challenge is, um, in particular, there's always, eh, eh, we have these goals and objectives, and these are, these are great goals and objectives to have, and we're always striving towards them. But it's the things that you don't see, it's the things that aren't, uh, it, it's the things that are not part of the goals and objectives that come at us on a daily basis that we continue to have to work through. Um, so it, it tends to divert time from getting onto some of these goals and objectives. Overall, I think the organization is doing very well in terms of continuing to work on these, a lot of these with a due date of quarter three. So that's why you see a lot of these currently in process, um, quarter three and quarter four as well, too. But it's just the, uh, it's the stuff that you don't plan for, it's the stuff that is outside of the scope of goals and objectives that tend to take a lot of time.
Okay, do you have your resources, enough resources? One of the things we've heard in the past is, you know, um, resources. That might be a challenge, but do you have, you seem to have co- accomplished a lot. So I ask again, do you have enough resources at this point?
Yeah, I would say in terms of human resources, in terms of financial resources, yes.
Okay.
The, the one resource, and it just goes back with answering your, your previous question, is, is sometimes time becomes a challenge. But, uh, I am very confident that we should be able to get through all of this this year. There's nothing on the horizon that I'm, I'm thinking that we're just not going to, to meet, otherwise I would have highlighted it red for the city commission and called out particular issues. But I think that, uh, we're getting things done.
Okay. Other members of the commission, questions? Commissioner Bush?
I'm probably gonna phrase this poorly, but, um, I, I feel like there's, uh, uh, we're we're lacking some movement on some of the things that may not have been, like, official goals and objectives, but that we talked about as a commission in terms of, like, parks and recreation, in terms of, like, program planning, planning and recommendation, and there was talk about, you know, you know, a position that would be, like, focused on, you know, events and programming and arts and culture and that sort of thing. What, what's the movement on that right now?
Yeah, um, let's see, I'm trying to think of some of the last reports that I read on that. I know some of the positions, in particular, our events position, I know that's going to be very soon here, um. Run me back, cause I didn't write them all down.
Yeah, just because we, you know, we built the space downtown, and, you know, we, we, as a commission, we kind of asked, hey, you know, we built this space, we, we wanna see what's happening. And the last presentation we had was basically, like, you know, Vice Mayor Akai said, we don't have the resources to do what we wanna do with this space. And so, like, I just kinda wanna know where we're at, because, you know, the, the, the season of programming is coming to an end. And, um, you know, there's been a lot of questions brought, you know, before me individually as a commissioner in terms of, like, what's going on with events downtown and whatnot. And, um, I just, you know, I, I know, you know, other things come up and that sort of thing. But I just wanna know where we're at on that for planning for, you know, the next programming year.
Yeah, I believe we should have the events position hammered out here within the next month. And, um, we are, eh, part of it was, we had looked, um, really to try to identify what is the best way to tackle this. Um, we are discussing internally, um, about some internal talent that I think we can tap into. And so I think that we will have that position on-boarded here within the next month and up and running.
Okay.
Other members of the commission, questions? Okay, um, question I had, um, um, following up on response, um, to Vice Mayor Akai, as you were talking about, like, obviously, um, just, again, we have the stated goals and objectives, and it's always the unknown, or like, the other minutia of the day and everything. That drags us, um, away from, like, what we wanna be working on. Um, is there any consistent themes or anything as we, like, you know, we're midway through this year, starting looking towards next year? Themes that are arising of things, things that weren't covered, obviously, I mean, like, if you're dealing with random sporadic issues, but, uh.
Uh, my apologies, and things that were covered related to these projects.
So you had mentioned, um, that one of the biggest challenges, um, in accomplishing goals and objectives was, um, just the everyday poll of other items out there. Um, is there any consistent themes of things coming across your table or the senior management's discussion? Um, that could, we could potentially look to address, um, or that's, uh, into the next year, again, looking ahead to goals and objectives?
No, I think that, um, I think that's some things that, um, have come onto our plate, I think are going to re- find themselves revolving very soon here, yeah.
Okay, thank you, uh, there's no other questions at this time, thank you, Manager Descents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Manager Descents, if you wanna stand by there, because the next presentation is not from someone outside of our city. Yeah, um, so our next presentation will be from a Mr. Kelly Sullivan of Epic M R A on our city's workplace climate survey. Um, Epic M R A conducted this survey at our request, um, and they did so in an unbiased, anonymous fashion. And, uh, Mr. Sullivan here is the primary staff person that we've been working with, and he is going to be giving us a presentation on the results of the survey this evening, so, um, Kelly, I invite you to take over at this point.
Can you hear me? Okay, great, uh, thank you very much for having me, my name is Kelly Sullivan, I'm a partner at Epic M R A in Lansing, we're an independent research firm. Uh, we were engaged by the city, conduct a employee survey, uh, just last month, and I'm here to reset the results and answer any questions that you might have, so with that, I will get into it. Uh, just as a prologue, we are an independent research firm, and when we sent out invitations for the employees to participate to their City of Mount Pleasant emails, it was made clear that we have no horse in the race, per se. We are strictly here as an independent third party to report the results in a non-biased manner. Uh, survey was also made available to former employees that, as I understand it, consented to be contacted at that time, of which there were a total of ten technically, uh, one of the employees that we contacted with the current city employee emails marked the former employee box, so that's how we came up with the eleven, uh, so all of them did participate in the survey. Uh, however, given the small sample size taken from former employees, this presentation will primarily focus on responses that came and were collected from currently employed individuals at the city. Uh, using this email database, we contacted a hundred twenty-four current employees, the survey was open for a period of two weeks. We issued personalized email reminders and initial invitations, uh, the The reminders were sent the second week, just to remind employees, hey, if this got overlooked or if you hadn't had a chance to participate in the survey yet, we would value your opinion. And we only sent those to the folks that had not already participated. To ensure no stuffing of the ballot box, as it were, each individual had a unique ID code tied to them. So that we only took one response per person. And I'm happy to report that there were not overwhelming instances of people trying to take the survey multiple times. Couple of false starts, but that's, that's par for the course. So in total, eighty-four of the 124 emails that I was provided participated in the survey, resulting in almost a 70% participation rate, which is outstanding. For these types of surveys, we'd like to see, we'd anticipate 40%, we'd say 50% is excellent. The fact that nearly 70% of those solicited participated in the survey is just outstanding. What that boils down to from scientific stance is that the survey has a result, a margin of error of six points degree of confidence at 95%. So what that means is we were to do the survey 20 more times. We would expect that 19 of those 20 times, the results would still be within that six point margin of error. And then I'm just going to jump into some of the questions that we started asking right out of the gate. How would you rate the city of Mount Pleasant and surrounding area as a place to live overwhelmingly positive? Twenty-one percent said excellent. A total of 68% said positive. You'll notice what's very telling in some of these slides. I like to focus on, well, how many people gave a poor rating? And you can see only 3%. When it comes to recreational offerings, 71% positive rating for the area. And again, only 3% poor. Then we asked, this is an industry standard net promoter scale. Would you recommend to friends and family living in the city of Mount Pleasant in the surrounding area? Zero to six, this is a zero to 10 scale. Zero to six are commonly referred to as detractors. The lower the number goes, the less positive things they have to say. Seven and eight passives, that's generally a good rating. That just means that they won't run up to you and tell you unsolicited how great the city is as a place to live versus the nine and 10 quote unquote promoters that you can't get them to stop talking about positive things when it comes to living in the city. So mean score, six point zero two four, median score of seven, the seven being in the passive range. Then we asked, okay, well, thinking about that same scale, how much would you recommend working for the city of Mount Pleasant? Similar scale. And what I found very interesting is there was one tenth of a point higher rating among city employees for working for the city versus living in the city. So what does that mean? They view working for the city comparatively speaking, slightly more positive than living in the area. Then in an open end question, we asked, what are the, one or two things that you like the most about working for the city? Benefits, feeling engaged in their job, the atmosphere, they feel it is a purposeful job. Their managers and supervisors, opportunities for advancement, those all trickle to the top. When it comes to dislikes, similarly, open ended question, one or two things that you dislike. City manager pay, atmosphere, culture, morale, city commission, communication, et cetera, et cetera. And I will suss out some of these results later in the slideshow with a little bit more specificity. But again, this was just top of mind, what came out among the respondents that answered this question. When it comes to rating the direction of the city of Mount Pleasant, a little less positive findings. Only 41% said positive, nearly 60% said negative, with nearly a quarter of all respondents saying poor. They view the direction of the city of Mount Pleasant as poor. Then we got into some lines of questions about thinking specifically about your job, your position. How satisfied are you with your job? Overwhelmingly positive. Over three quarters of the respondents offered a positive rating. And again, tellingly, only 2% said they were very dissatisfied. When it comes to pay, almost identical marks overall, very satisfied. When it comes to benefits, even more satisfied, 83% total satisfied. Personal and sick time, 90% total satisfied. And again, paying attention to the other column, you'll see the very dissatisfied rating only in the single digits, around three to 4%. Satisfied with work-life balance, again overwhelmingly positive, over three quarters saying they're satisfied. And when it comes to opinions on term for growth and advancement, nearly two thirds said they were very, sorry, satisfied. Thirty-five percent said very satisfied with their opportunities available to them for growth. So when we look at all these different factors that traditionally affect job satisfaction, here they are ranked for you, leading with time off at 90%. Opportunities for growth being the least relatively satisfied measuring, but still at two thirds of all respondents being satisfied with those opportunities. Then we started to talk a little bit more about the work environment. Satisfaction with coworkers, a near unanimous 95% are satisfied with the people that they work with on a day to day basis. We asked them to rate their immediate supervisor, again overwhelmingly positive, 80% total positive and nearly 60% excellent for the people that they report to directly. Very comfortable when it comes to asking questions of their immediate supervisor, a near unanimous 93% comfortable, 81% very comfortable. When it comes to feedback, communication, the other direction from their immediate supervisor, again overwhelmingly positive. With three quarters of the respondents say they're very comfortable receiving feedback from their supervisor. We asked then, how often do you get feedback from your supervisor? And you can see a total of 75% say they do very or somewhat often get that type of communication from their immediate supervisor. Then we got into some lines of questions about management. Do you believe that management builds an open and collaborative workforce? 70% believe that, 31% believe that they do strongly. Truthful and honest with employees, a little dip here, 60% said they agree that management is truthful and honest with their employees, with just over a quarter saying that they strongly agree. When it comes to caring, 63% said that they agree that their management cares about them with over a third saying they believe that strongly. When it comes to being treated equally regardless of gender, overwhelmingly, certain participants believe that they are treated equally. 60% believe that strongly. When asked about being the city commission being supportive of city employees, this is where we kind of took a turn where more respondents said that they disagree with that statement than agree. It's a plurality nearly split up the middle, 50 50 on either side, agree, disagree that the city commission is supportive of city employees. The senior management team communicating goals and objectives effectively. Again, not their immediate supervisor, the seat above that, the senior management team, again, nearly split, nearly 50 50 on both sides of the issue in agreement or disagreement. And so looking back over those slides, you can see the level of agreement overwhelmingly. They feel they're treated equally, collaborative workforce, management is caring. And then when it comes to truthful, honest transparency and the way senior management is perceived at treating them and communicating with them, that's where we see things start to drop off. And the plurality becomes apparent that is 50 50 on both sides of the issue. We asked employees to rate their work environment in their department and somewhat counterintuitive to the open ended question that we asked earlier. Over three quarters rated as positive, 38% said excellent. Despite that being one of the things that did emerge in the open ended question on why negative. Similarly, communication, that was something that popped up earlier, but when we asked them specifically, 80% say communication currently taking place in their department or organization is positive, with a third of the respondents saying it's excellent. So. When communication was mentioned broadly earlier, we asked specifically taking place between departments or between organizations within the city. And this is where the negativity on the appearance of the communication issue takes form. As you can see, nearly 60% said a negative rating versus 40% giving a positive rating for interdepartmental communication. Similarly, slightly lower marks when it comes to top down communication from superiors. Again, this would be anyone above their immediate manager or supervisor that they report to. Still positive, 60%, 30% excellent. But you see a higher rating of just fair or poor at 39% total. Morale, that was something that was mentioned in the open ended question earlier in the survey. Again, a plurality emerges nearly 50 50 positive versus negative when it comes to employee morale. And we see a negative perception of labor relations between the city and the unions that represent the employees. Nearly two thirds offered a negative rating, 40% of the respondents gave it a poor rating. So looking at these different perspectives, communication within the department and their department work environment where they work day to day get top marks. And again, as I hinted at earlier, when you start thinking about communication from the supervisors or managers that are above their direct supervisor or manager, that's where we see a need for improvement. Communication top down morale, communication between the departments and labor relations scored the lowest. We offered those that offered a negative rating on labor relations to tell us in an open ended question, why? Fifteen percent said the city manager, 13% said decisions are made over, based on money over people, a lack of transparency, low morale, feeling that there's distrust, et cetera, et cetera. You'll see these themes emerge, if you haven't already, throughout the open ended questions, regardless of the topic. When we ask why negative, it's, it's a concern about communication and direction coming from the supervisors above their immediate supervisor and a resulting feeling of it's causing morale issues in, in their workforce, especially in their department. We did ask about D E I and their employee satisfaction with that, as you can see overwhelmingly satisfied with D E I being accepted in the city workforce, nearly half of the respondents gave that a very satisfied ranking. When we asked the only five individuals that offered a negative rating of why they were dissatisfied, the overwhelming majority, again, this is three people, said the workforce is not diverse. One person said, people with different backgrounds are not actively recruited and one person refused to answer the question. So it is important on some of these slides to take in mind that when we're asking, why did you offer a dissatisfied rating? Or why did you offer a negative rating? To look at the number of people that actually answered that question. If you go back a couple of slides, you'll see things like emerging to the top at 15%. That was the most cited answer, but it wasn't 15% of everybody that took the survey. It was 15% of the 40 people that answered that question. In other words, that was only six individuals, not to be confused with, you know, a overwhelming percentage of all city employees. Then we asked the employees to, which of these three statements would describe how long they plan on continuing their employment with the city of Mount Pleasant? Again, over three quarters said they're going to be here for the foreseeable future. 16% said they'll stick around for a few years, but intend to eventually move on. And only 6% said they plan to leave their employment with the city within the next year or so. When we asked again, what's the main reason why you intend to leave? 28% said the city manager, but as I mentioned before, this is 28% of the 18 people that answered that question. So that's four rounding, four people that cited city manager. Similar lack of opportunities for advancement and growth, the same amount of people. Pay, retirement, morale, et cetera. As I mentioned earlier, these themes that kind of emerged throughout the survey when we're asking employees to put into their own reasons why they might be dissatisfied with certain issues. Then we asked, thinking about your current job, what's the single most important thing you would like to see the city of Mount Pleasant change or improve on? Again, open ended question, returning to an atmosphere of respect, appreciation, more inviting environment. When you look back at some of the why negative slides, this can go to culture, morale, et cetera. So again, the, the theme is emerging and followed by retaining quality employees, recruiting. Just a general feeling of, we're feeling overworked. We need some more people to help us in our department and our jobs. Followed by pay. And I will say to the pay scale issue, I haven't really been drawing attention to it, even though it pops up in every single open ended slide. But I have never worked for an organization or municipality where pay hasn't shown up at at least 10%. Doesn't matter where, doesn't matter when, everybody would like to see more money in their pocket. So then near the conclusion of the survey, we like to revisit that net promoter score question, just to see now that we've kind of jogged your memory about all the little details of your job, your employment, your coworkers, management, et cetera, et cetera. Now, how would you rate you're working for the city of Mount Pleasant? And interestingly enough, in the case of this instant project, it didn't change. Normally we see a change. So what that tells me is that the employees, when they went into this survey, they already had their mind made up about how they feel. There's nothing that we said in the survey that made a light switch go on and say, oh, you know what? Yeah, my pay is pretty greater. Yeah, you know what? I don't like being told what to do. It remained fairly static throughout. However, I do want to say that a mean score of 6.185, which is just, you know, on the top end of detractors, low end of passives is not terrible. That tells me that there's room for improvement. But when you look back at the questions going to employee retention, what are you satisfied with? Your pay, your benefits, your time off, your work-life balance and all that stuff. And the fact that nearly 80% of the employees say they plan to stay at their job for this foreseeable future. That means yes, there are some issues that need to be addressed, but the ship's not going down. It's not entirely dire. It's not an insurmountable task. For those that at this point offered a net promoter score of six or less, the quote unquote detractors. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the themes that emerge remain the same in this question. Of the 39 people that answered this question, nearly a quarter said management, low morale. And then again, benefits, pay, like I said, I could almost guarantee you would pop up once again, certainly do. Among some other reasons, scoring in just the single digits. We did ask a handful of demographics. You'll see the mean number of years, the employees that participated in the survey have worked for the city is just over 10. Fairly good age breakup, a very small portion, 65 and over. Obviously highly educated, you have to be to have this type of job. Race, not overly diverse, 86% said white, 3% said mixed and 10% said other. And slightly heavy male, 56% over female at 25% with nearly 20% choosing to refuse that question. So what are the takeaways after I just talked about all these numbers for 20 minutes? I thought it was interesting, as I mentioned earlier, that city employees do offer a higher net promoter score for working for the city than they do living in the city and surrounding areas. As I mentioned earlier, city employees are largely satisfied with their job. Nearly 80% satisfied overall and especially satisfied with their coworkers, their benefits, their time off, their work-life balance. And the least satisfaction again, at still two thirds satisfied, opportunities for growth and advancement. When it comes to room for improvement, city employees top concerns, and I'm taking this from looking at the data as a whole, not just slide by slide, but kind of marrying the ins and outs, what we see as a trend. Top concerns center around communication and a lack of perceived honest, top down communication from management supervisors and between departments, not their immediate supervisor, but those above and those outside. Further concerns emerged about employee morale, feeling supported by the commission and labor relations between the city and the unions that represent those employees. So if you were to ask me, where do I think the improvement needs to be made? This is what I would, this is what I would tell you. To the extent that we were able to identify detractors in those net promoter scores when it comes to, would you recommend working for the city? These two subgroups stuck out above the average. So I could say, all right, statistically, these types or, you know, qualifications are the ones that were least likely to be promoters or at least passive about working for the city. Those being employed for the city 21 years or more, a total of 13 individuals. And also those that plan on leaving their employment soon, a total of five individuals out of the 84 that took the survey. And now I'd like to open it up for questions if you have any. I will apologize in advance if you ask me a question and I ask you to repeat it. It's not because I'm not paying attention. I just have a hearing loss issue unfortunately, so I will do my best.
First off, thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Sullivan for the presentation. It was very thorough. And again, you, I've really appreciated how you've gone about handling the survey process. You really emphasized anonymity. The report that's in our packet this evening is the extent to which we have received information back from you folks. And that's the way we want it. So I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
I just wanted to kick us off with that, but I believe other members of the commission have questions. I think I saw a hand raised from Commissioner Bush, wasn't?
The I just was looking for some clarity. I really appreciate the I'm a college student right now, and I'm taking some statistics. So I was like, oh, I should get extra credit. But going back to the the question, because there were some concerns raised about interpretation of results before we had the presentation.
Okay.
In regards to the specific question about any gender bias. So if we can go back to that slide, and then let's, let's, let's get a little statistics lesson. So we can make sure we're understanding this.
I will get us there.
Look at all this great information.
This one, all employees being treated equally.
So so all quite so of all respondents, eighty eight percent agree that employees are treated equally because of gender. There was some interpretation that gave us an impression different than that. Do you have any idea where that interpretation could have come from?
Well, I mean, in looking at the cross tabs, which is where we break out all the questions that are asked individually by the demographic answers, such as education, race, and gender. On this particular one, and I made notes before I got here, we look at this question, and ninety one percent of male employees agreed with this statement over the eighty eight percent total. Eighty six percent of female employees agreed with this statement, just under the total. Where I think there might be a little bit of gap is when you look at the demographics, nearly sixty percent of the workforce identified as male. So they might be overrepresented when it looks, you know, when it comes to just looking at a pure proportionality of the question, but they are a larger representation of the city workforce. So I think what, you know, what is telling on this particular issue since it was brought up is that even looking at the female respondents, eighty six percent agreed with this statement versus the eighty eight percent total of all genders combined.
Other questions from members of the commission?
I want to look at the the DEI question, which fascinates me because it says we're okay, but could you go back to that slide?
I'm sorry, which slide?
The DEI slide. Where he says, what is it? Ninety something percent says, well, okay. Ninety four percent. Right?
Yeah.
You're right. I mean, I'm fascinated by that, you know, only because of that percentage that says the next slide says, but you're not diverse enough, right?
Right.
You know, which in reality, if we're thinking DEI broadly, it's the next slide that makes sense. Because this slide, you know, if you're thinking DEI narrowly, given what you just talked about, that a high percentage of the workforce is predominantly male, right?
And predominantly white.
Exactly. So there's a problem here. If I'm reading that reading it, you know, based on that, you know, from that perspective, I'll look at it and say, wait a minute. Something is missing, right?
Right. So to the extent that there are perceptions that DEI is not adequate, there was nothing in the cross tabs that I could pull out and say, all right, a statistically valid number of non white males, because it was just a handful of individuals. But I can say it was not the non white male, or that it was not the white males that were dissatisfied with how DEI is being handled right now. So is that getting at the perceived gap?
Okay, that's yeah, that's 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 addressed. Yeah, yeah, it's getting at 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 the gap that I'm talking about, because if we were to use this data and present outwardly, the assumption would be that we're okay. But the other slide says, but we're not okay. And the reality is different from that, what that slide is saying to us, you know, the actual, you know, historical, social, whatever it is, reality that you see is different from what the slide is saying. However, the slide says something utterly different. And I see a schism there that could be problematic. And I'm thinking of how we're going to address that. It also has something, it also has something to do with the gender piece piece. Because if you if sixty percent of the workforce or more than that is predominantly male, and then you've got a lower percentage that is also female, there is that possibility of seeing, you know, again, having that schism that we're talking about, that gap in terms of representation, in terms of, you know, attitude or perception of what is happening.
Right. Because when we're looking at the positive negative slides, I'm just presenting that as everybody in the pie, not just necessarily the specific subjects. And as we did touch on, like you said, majority of the workforce is male, majority of the workforce is white, and to the extent that there is a perceived gap in DEI, it's for exactly that reason that came out on top. They don't, we're just not diverse. That's what the people that think we need to be doing more say, we are not diverse.
I mean, I appreciate this. You are a statistician. I do cultural studies. I read culture. I do that piece of interpreting what I'm seeing in terms of the cultural representation and the implications. I do, I deal with narrative analysis and what you just gave me, I'm looking at it thinking. Right? Thank you.
My pleasure.
I really am glad we did collect that data on on the DEI element. It doesn't seem like it is the most urgent concern at the moment. And I I think if we do continue to do some research on, if we do want to look at this again, I think in the future, it might be good to ask questions too, where we talk about this data in relation to the data of our surrounding community too. Because we have to acknowledge that, you know, you know, we are in a predominantly white community. And we're only now just becoming more aware of you know, how that how that impacts, you know? Sorry, I'm not.
No, I understand. I neglected to say it early. I mean, we found in every community that we've done this for, and it's not necessarily municipality, only, you know, when it membership organizations and transportation authorities and whatnot. When you go out and you do this type of research, you've already made the first step. You have engaged your employees and said, you're complaining about communication, and we've taken the first step. This is step one to open those lines of communication. We have asked, we have listened, we engaged a third party to do it in a non biased way, in a way that will protect you confidentiality. And and I just think it's it's a fantastic first foot forward.
Vice Mayor.
I, you know, I want to say that I appreciate this presentation a lot, because it reveals a number of things, you know, one is communication, you know, that at the top, in terms of if, let's say, potential area, you know, theme that might, we might, if we were to do it, it's what, you know, analysis, right? You know, potential area of something that might be potential area of threat would be communication, communication, transparency, communication, because that's showing up again and again and again. It's communication, it's transparency, it's communication, it's transparency. And then that, of course, affects a whole range of things. So for me, this becomes important, but it also says to us, these are areas that we actually do need to work on. If we need to make changes, if we need to move forward, if we need to do something, here are the potential areas, you know, you can look at it as threat or opportunity. The same goes with the DEI piece that we're talking about. All right, you know, and of course, addressing the gender pieces that we're talking about. So I appreciate this. Thank you.
Other members of the commission?
I am curious with communication being the running theme as far as the issue with staff morale. Was there anything in particular that was a big hurdle that was given for an answer? Nothing that stood out as a gigantic hurdle. I mean, taken as a whole, not being like to be told what to do and not understanding why you're being told that, i.e. from upper management, the folks that you don't work arm in arm with every day, because you can see that in the ratings, you know, the media supervisor, high nineties. But when it comes to, you know, the people they might not interact with all the time or understand, that's when you start to see the results dipping. So somehow bridging that gap between, and again, it's not their coworkers, and it's not within their department, but bridging that gap between the step above their immediate boss, the communication, and, you know, we hear, you know, terms thrown around in these open ended questions like dishonest, but often it comes down to they don't feel like it's forthright, you know, they don't always understand the whys. And I think, you know, kind of bridging that gap is a good step to get those numbers up, frankly, yeah.
One thing I noticed while I was going through all my orientation and onboarding over the course of the weekend is we have a lot of departments that are smaller, even single person departments. So for people to feel to test satisfaction within their own one, two, three person departments, but outside of that, it really shows that there is a lacking for interdepartment communication and open channels.
Those were some of the top areas cited as we need to improve that. So you're exactly right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last comment from myself on this to the members, to the members of the commission. And just, just as I've been going through this process, I believe we had between two to three work sessions on this topic. This, we started this back in process back in January and February, I believe on this. So this is something where, again, I was very pleased to see the level of participation that we got. Staff reached out to like responded when we put out the call of like, what, what are the issues that we're hearing? Or what are we not hearing? So bring those forward to us. And so over the next, over the next course of the next year, I really would like to work on incorporating this into our strategy, just strategic developments and policy setting for our board. Kind of question, and I've asked this question to you before. So if you can just elaborate on it for the other members of the commission, I think one of the first questions I asked was like, hey, when should we do this again? Like, your thought process on of like, should we be calling up MRA next year to like, just let's run it again? Or what kind of timeframe?
Sure. I mean, I think everything takes time to implement and change. So it would be, and I know I'm talking myself out of a potential job here, but, you know, it wouldn't be prudent to try to roll out another employee satisfaction survey in three to six months unless the city already has things in place and ideas and, you know, this is our, we thought these results were going to be this way. So we already have all these action plans ready to go. Things just take time, especially on a municipal level. So maybe in a year, but I would say eighteen months to maybe even two years.
Yeah.
Because time or change takes time.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So with that, again, without any other questions from the members of the commission, again, we appreciate you. We have your contact information. If we have other questions, we'll reach out.
Absolutely. Please reach out. I did want to say before I leave that it's it's truly been a pleasure to work with everybody from day one that's been involved from the city on this personal project. So thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At long last, that brings us to additions and deletions to the agenda for this evening. Does, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda from members of the commission? No, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we have. I move that we accept the agenda as presented or approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, there was a motion by Vice Mayor Ake to approve the agenda, seconded by Commissioner Al Sager. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. At this time, we'll move into public input on agenda items. If you are in the audience and would like to step up and give comments, you will be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. And if you, as this is an input on agenda items, if you can state the agenda item that you're speaking on.
Cynthia Kilmer, two nineteen North Lansing Street is not what you think. The agenda item is this workplace climate survey. I just want to congratulate our city manager. I thought that was a very positive survey. And the large percentage of people who are satisfied, I thought was it was really good. You know, any organization has some small room for improvement here or there, but on the whole, I was pretty impressed by that. I was. The one thing that caught my attention that that I wanted to speak to you about was, and I forgot exactly how it was put, but something like that some city employees don't think that the city commission is advocating for them or something. Okay, that's the one that I wanted to speak about. It's not your job. That's what I want to say. It's not your job. You are all elected by the citizens who live here. You are not elected by the city employees, I mean, unless they live here. But your focus is to represent us, the people. I voted for each and every one of you, every single one of you. I voted for, my husband voted for, most of my friends voted for. I advocated for every one of you, and I did so not because I care whether you get along or not with a particular department head or a particular employee, but because I believe you'll advocate for the people who live here. And that's what your job is. Sometimes, you know, you get out there and you campaign and you say, oh, you're going to listen to everybody. You want to know what all the citizens think. And for those of you who don't know, I was also on the city commission several years ago for nine years. What happens was you step into this position, and after a while, you start to twist it a little bit in your mind, and you start to think that your representation of the city organization, that you work for the organization of the city of Mount Pleasant, and that's not really true. It's just, it's fun to be a city commissioner, and you meet all these people in these department heads and the city employees, and you start to feel like one of them, and you want them to like you and all that. But that's not your job to say it any, I'm not sure how else to say it. I think I've said it enough. So I would congratulate you on having the foresight or whatever to do this workplace survey. And I hope it answers your questions. And I think personally, it was a very positive survey. And I hope you're satisfied with it. And thank you very much. Is your work session on the agenda? Is that an agenda item? Okay, but I'm probably out of my five minutes. I'll be brief. Roosters are mean. You don't want them. Oh, I have a minute. Hens are nice. They don't need roosters to lay eggs. Okay? So if you just have a shed in your backyard, you can have, you know, half a dozen hens that will lay you eggs every day. It's lovely. You don't have to have a rooster. Hens are very quiet. I can have three dogs in the city limits in my backyard. They put up so much bracket. Well, I really have two, but if I had three, that they're a pest. But if I have half a dozen hens, my brother has hens. This is how I know about hens. If I have half a dozen hens, the neighbors wouldn't even know about it. They wouldn't care. They are so quiet. Okay? You can do it easily. It's not going to bother people noise wise. And if you limit it to like, you know, six or seven or whatever, it's not going to make a big stink. And it's going to be helpful to your citizens when groceries are so high. So that's what I have to say about that. Thank you.
Other members of the audience who'd like to give public comments at this time? If you're online, if you want to raise your hand, if you'd like to give public comments. Are there any emails, Director Moore?
We did receive one email earlier today from Dan Coin in support of backyard chickens. There are no raised hands.
Not seen anyone else rushing up to the podium at this time. Oh, I'm getting a hand wave over there. Thank you. If you are interested, please make sure If you are interested, please make sure you're lining up and we'll keep the meeting, meeting moving along.
We have a new timer.
New toy here. Yes, thank you, um.
Ashley Petrasch, one one four North Lansing Street. I support hens, chickens, and I wouldn't discriminate against a rooster.
Okay. At this time, I am going to close public inputs on agenda items. And we will move into receipt of petitions and communications, manager desents.
Receipt petitions and communications includes the resignation letter of Glenn Irwin from the planning commission and monthly report on police related citizen complaints received.
Thank you. And if you would, move us right into the consent items.
Absolutely. Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held July twenty eight, twenty twenty five. Approval of the minutes from the closed session held July twenty eight, twenty twenty five. Consider awarding the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven snow hauling contract to R and T Murphy Trucking for one hundred thirty eight dollars per hour. Consider awarding the twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six leaf hauling contract to RT, R and T Murphy Trucking of Mount Pleasant for one hundred thirty eight dollars per hour. Consider approval of the purchase of six pickup trucks from La Fontaine Ford of Lansing for two hundred sixty nine thousand thirty dollars and a trade in amount of one hundred eighty six thousand dollars for a net cost of eighty three thousand thirty dollars for the Department of Public Works and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
So the consent agenda are items that are largely agreed upon, um, that the commission can just approve in bulk. Um, so at this time, we would just be asking if there's anything, um, on that consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to remove into the regular agenda into the new business section that can be done with any commissioner, just it doesn't need to be seconded if anyone has a problem or wants to single out an item that can be done there. Um, is there anything that members would like to move out of the consent agenda? Nope. Okay, um, is there any discussion or questions on any of the items? Not seeing any. I did have one item that I wanted to highlight there, uh, manager descends, item number ten, the purchase of the six pickup trucks from La Fontaine Ford. Um, we do have, um, and we discussed this before, so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to just talk about it, um, for the general public. Um, we had the, uh, we have a policy that favors local buyers. Um, could you talk a bit about that and how that comes into play?
Yeah, so local buyers, um, per our purchase policy, local buyers who bid or local, I should say sellers who, uh, bid on these kind of proposals do have a bit of a leeway. I believe it's, um, five, ten percent. Um, I think Director Morse is, if you recall.
Yes.
Yep. Yep, actually I can pull it up right now. I know it's five or ten. It's just been a while. And so that was one of the issues because I know we do have a local bidder on this. However, um, they were above that threshold.
Okay. I can save you the searching for the moment if you want to follow up with us on that. Um, more than anything, I just wanted to highlight that we do have a process that takes that into account that, um, looks to favor local sellers on that when we can.
Uh, my apologies to say, uh, to correct that amount of three percent differential allowed for our local bids uh, within the city of Mount Pleasant.
Thank you, manager descents. Okay. And with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those, um, there is a motion from Commissioner, um, Per, or Al Sager, um, and seconded by the vice mayor there. Um, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. All right, that brings us, see, we do not have any public hearings this evening into new business. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to manager descents.
So first item on new business evening is the consider the adoption of the wellhead protection resolution to establish administrative procedures to be used to protect the source water of the city's water system. The city commission is asked to consider the approval of this resolution. The resolution underlines the importance of wellhead protection ensures that the city of Mount Pleasant will not issue permits essentially until we can be certain that it's not going to negatively impact our wellhead, uh, source water. Um, the resolution is being recommended by the wellhead protection committee as well. Would you have Director Jason Moore here who can talk to us about this and answer any questions that you may have?
Yeah, so, um, as Erin mentioned even earlier today, uh, this was one of the, uh, city commission's, uh, goals for this year, uh, to do a, um, uh, ordinance for wellhead protection. And as we were doing research on this, uh, we found some really good ordinances, uh, in the southwest Michigan area. Um, but they were quite complex. And when you look at the wellhead, uh, protection area that's within the city limits, um, really it's, it's fairly small and uh, almost entirely made up by, uh, land that is owned by CMU. And because of our really, you know, close working relationship with CMU and, uh, given the fact that they are our number one customer and so certainly have a vested interest in our wellhead, uh, protection, just like we do. Um, it, it seemed reasonable to go this, uh, resolution route, which is, uh, far simpler. Um, and matches what it is done in, in, in Union Township, uh, which actually covers more of our wellhead protection area. And so, yeah, w- w- we brought this to the, uh, wellhead protection committee and, uh, which had representatives from CMU there as well as, uh, uh, Health Department and, uh, County ELC. And no one's seen any issues with, uh, taking this, uh, course of action. And so, um, with that, I take any questions that anyone may have.
Commissioner Al Sager.
Well, this question is more about the placement of a sign. Um, I was entering Mount Pleasant from the south on old mission and I saw a sign that it looked like it was a new sign. Has there been a new sign up about this is a wellhead protection area?
Yes, that's something that we did because of the actions that we took last year, putting that plan together. Um, our consultant delineated those areas and so we, we put those signs up just, uh, making folks aware that, you know, you're in a wellhead protection area and so, you know, maybe be a little more careful.
Well, it was noticed.
Vice Mayor Eke.
I just, you know, this is, this is just for clarity. So for somebody who does not understand what the significance of a wellhead protection is explained in layperson's terms.
So, uh, these are areas where, um, if there were any source of contamination, if you had large industry that was, uh, say they were storing large quantities of hazardous materials on site, um, you would not want them in this area because of the consequences of a spill. Um, these, um, uh, the rate of transfer for these materials as they go through the ground, it, it can be long term and, um, the cleanup can be, um, well terribly expensive. So, um, so that's what the, the, this process allows us to take those things into consideration when a site plan comes to the city. Um, we can, um, you know, look at what their operations are going to be, uh, and, and make sure that, uh, there's not, um, um, concerning chemicals being stored. Uh, when we did the wellhead protection plan, um, the consultant did an overall, uh, inventory of all the different, uh, possible sources of contamin- contamination in those wellhead protection areas. And there were, uh, none found that were, um, of, of great concern at the time, but we want to keep it that way, of course.
Okay, I just to follow up, I, I understand what a wellhead protection plan looks like, at least what it is, but I just wanted to make sure that we are on the same platform or on the same page with that. I'm going to follow up. Does this mean therefore that, say, for instance, a huge industry comes into town and is going to probably do some work that involves chemicals and water resources? If they submit an application, your commission or committee would have to look at that first before they begin to do anything that has the potential of contaminating, uh, water resources. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that will be part of the, uh, site plan checklist. Now, it won't be the full committee that has to look at these things. This will be a, a staff, you know, a, a review uh, process at staff level, but, uh, um, it gives us the teeth, if you will, to stop those things from happening if they shouldn't happen.
Okay, so you're saying staff at your unit, the city staff, staff at your unit will take a look at this.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Other questions from members of the commission? Thank you, Jason. Commissioner Al Sager.
I move that we adopt the attached resolution to establish administrative procedures for protecting the source water of the city's water system.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Al Sager, seconded by Vice Mayor Eke. Um, all those in favor of the resolution will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say nay. Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to item number thirteen, manager descents, if you would.
This is consider approval of the self insurance deficit elimination plan. This is very similar to what we did last year. There was one of the storms sewer fund as well. Our funds were not transferred between funds in time to avoid the deficit on paper. We do have finance director Lauren Pavlowski. She had, uh, written up a really great report on this to the city commission here, just kind of acknowledging the issue and then talking about our deficit elimination plan. Um, she's also here to discuss the requirement for the plan. Um, so if I can pass it off to her, I'll just have her explain what took place here, sort of the accounting that you see in that um, deficit elimination plan that's being, uh, asked to be passed this evening.
So with our fiscal year twenty twenty four annual audit, we ended up with a seventy seven thousand dollar deficit in the self insurance plan. And this comes to, um, just down to the end of the year reporting and making sure that we had all the transfers in place prior to closing out the books. With the new staff that came in and not having the prior procedures available to us, this part was overlooked, so we did have that deficit in, um, the annual audit. To correct that, we do need to make sure that we are accounting for the deficit as well as the current year expenses. Um, so I did put together the proposed amendment that we have for the fiscal year twenty twenty five that will correct that deficit as well as make sure that we are in a positive ending balance for the current fiscal year. Um, so I'm looking at a, a, a total budget adjustment of a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars and that will correct that budget overall. Once, um, this goes through your approval, then we will take this information, send it over to the state of Michigan. And this is also needed to ensure that our bonding continues to go through for our, um, water plant upgrades that we're doing.
Okay. Um, questions for staff on this? Quite a question I have, um, and it's more of like procedural, so getting into your job. When a deficit like this occurs, like, and I, um, like, kind of like on the books, what does that look like? Is there an account someplace that's sitting with a negative balance? Or is it just saying like, hey, within the fund, like, we're going to need to move funds over? Like, what does that look like and everything, uh, in a practical manner, I guess?
It depends, it depends on the fund and what we're doing with that one. Um, with this one, we do have a negative in that fund right now per the book balance as of the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty four. It just basically says that we had more expenses that were booked over the revenues that came in, whether that was transfers through intergovernment um, accounts through the different funds, like taking our general account and, um, helping out this self insurance side of things. So it's just basically an accounting side of things. This one specifically has to do with the self insurance. So this is our health insurance and that side of things that is paid for out of the general fund. And, um, if there are any employee contributions into that, that's where that's coming from. So basically we just booked more expenses than we did revenues.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so, am I hearing that we did not commit enough money into the general fund to cover this, which is why we have deficit? We're not taking enough money or enough contributions or something?
We didn't push enough money from our general fund into the self insurance fund to cover it for the year. Um, some of that has to do with timing for the invoices that come in versus when we actually booked them on the books. If we had a year that had a big surplus as, so, um, as opposed to a deficit, then we would have a, you know, timing that we had more of the revenues or the money from the general fund going in as opposed to the checks we wrote out for the insurance side of things. So it's just a lot of it has, comes down to the timing and doing that transfer for the general fund into the self insurance fund to make sure everything else is covered for a portion of it that comes out of the general.
Okay, is there a set amount that is generally, um, transferred from the general fund to this insurance monthly or quarterly to address this?
Typically is done with a, a bi weekly transfer based on our payroll side of things. We also do have monthly and quarterly transfers as well. So it's all based on the timing on which different payment we're making at what time. So it's just something that I think with the transition in the finance department early on, it wasn't caught at the end of the year to ensure that we had that balance there.
Okay, you've addressed part of the next question that I was going to ask, which is, what would you do to remedy this in the future? We don't want to be doing this every year.
Absolutely not. This is not something I plan to have
Okay.
a repeat of. It's going to be more on the fact that now that I'm familiar with this fund as well, and it's one of those things that comes into those bank reconciliations and making sure all the other accounts are reconciled at the same time for the end of the fiscal year. It's noted in my year end processes going forward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Al Sager.
I just have a question. Did I hear you correctly? You're requesting a one hundred thirty nine thousand dollar budget amendment?
Yes.
And how did you come up with that number?
I looked at past trends from the twenty twenty four year, um, with our activity that we had there. And I looked at what we have spent currently in the twenty twenty five year for the activity in using the fact that we have roughly seven months into this, or I believe it was sixteen pays so far into this, depending on which process I'm looking at. Double checking those numbers and kind of getting a feeling of where we are versus where we need to be. Um, just based on my projections on the experience that I have with, um, creating budgets and looking forward.
Thank you.
Other questions from members of the commission?
So the contributing variables were, uh, unfamiliarity with the timeline for the end of year fiscals and, um, just the, the amount that needs to be moved for that. Was that a quarterly payment, I'm assuming then for the insurance?
It's one of those things that it's a combination of several other things. Um, I came on, on January second. So our year end was, uh, December thirty first. So I got to learn the whole process stepping into this and me having that unfamiliarity with the city of Mount Pleasant and all the different funds and all the closeout procedures and not having a documented, uh, process to follow. Um, this was something that I didn't see on that side when I was looking over everything to start with. So now it's on my, um, end of year checklist to make sure that I'm balancing all these funds and making sure everything's moving forward correctly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's kind of questions there. I just want to say, Director Pavlowski, um, thank you for, again, coming forward to us with like, with these different issues so we can address them. And thank you for coming forward of not just addressing issues now, but it sounds like you're developing internal controls on that for yourself and for your team. So thank you for that work there. We appreciate that, um, you taking on that transition. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Commissioner Al, Commissioner Al Sager.
Here's a, a requested action.
Yes.
So I'm going to read this one too. Um, I move that we approve the budget amendment of a hundred thirty nine thousand dollars for last year's budget and to approve the definite elimination plan for the self insurance fund.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Al Sager, seconded by Vice Mayor Eke. Um, voting in favor of this would be, um, voting in favor of the budget amendments, um, and adoption of the plan. Um, all those in favor will indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. Let's see. Okay, and that brings us to item number fourteen, consider appointment of city commissioners to applicable city boards and commissions. Um, we have a new member of the commission on board. Um, so we have two, um, two appointments that, um, I wanted to make this evening. Um, looked, I'd like to put you to the charter committee and then to the property committee. Um, there was a third committee that I had discussed, a brief discussion with staff, and it sounds like there was some uh, confusion on that, on that original appointment. So I will circle back with staff and everything. Um, it was CM Crew. I'm pretty sure Commissioner Bush was appointed, but as been, has been the past, we've, the we've, the commission and the city just doesn't have a whole lot of contact or connection with them, so we're looking to revamp that. So I'm just putting that to the side. I know Katie might follow up with an email if I don't include that in the agenda, so I wanted to. I had some questions about that, so. In any case, Commissioner Skelitsky, do you have any issue working with the Charter Committee and the Property Committee? They do not meet regularly and they'd be through the end of the year.
I have no issues accepting these appointments in any way, shape, or form.
Good. Well, thank you so much.
Just appoint him to all of them.
Every single committee?
Seems so excited.
Okay. Well, with that, again, Dirk Schmelzer, do you have your records and everything for that one there? The appointment for the appointments, there's no motion or anything, so I didn't want it to go under the radar. Okay. Let's see. Okay, that brings us to the end of the business, a new business, and moves us into announcements on city-related issues and new business. So going alphabetically, starting with Commissioner Al Sager. Any announcements or new business you'd like to bring to our attention?
Just one thing, since it's the 100th anniversary of our local Rotary Club, they have gifted us with this neat structure in Nelson Park that it's a musical thing that when you move the string or whatever you can hold on to, it's actually a golf ball that hits the side of the bell and it's very melodic. So anyhow, it's a nice addition to the city.
Thank you. Commissioner Bush?
I just want to give advanced notice of the Isabella County Conservation District hazardous and electronic waste collection that is going to be for September 13th from eight to 12 at the fairgrounds. And this is an opportunity to, you know, get some stuff cleaned up that would not be disposed of safely in other manners. So this is for your chemicals, paints, as well as electronic disposal for, you know, the hazardous metal materials that may be in things like computers and television sets and that sort of thing. You can go to the website to get a full list of the materials that they do accept.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ecke?
Nothing for me at this point.
Commissioner Perschbacher?
Being that we are in the middle of August, we have to remember that our university in town, CMU, and the Tribal College, as well as Mid-Michigan, will be opening up and we will be seeing a increase in students. My understanding is that this upcoming weekend, they'll be moving into the dorms at CMU. I'm one of the volunteers that's going to point in the direction. But it's just to remind everyone, we are going to see a little bit more traffic. Everyone be patient. And with the beginning of the semester also comes the beginning of the new school year for our young children and adolescents in the city. So please watch out for children walking, buses, traffic, and be very respectful to those around you.
Thank you, Commissioner Perschbacher. Commissioner Rollins, any announcements?
I have none at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Skelitsky, anything you'd like to talk about?
Well, being housing, being one of the presentations that we saw today and one of the things I campaigned on, I am interested in looking at the, in identifying the out-of-state corporations that own properties, particularly residential parcels inside city limits. I know there's a large demand for single-family affordable homes as well as a high need for affordable apartments inside of town. And I'm curious how many parcels these out-of-state entities are there operating?
Thank you. For myself, I had two items first. Well, I'm not going to limit myself. Commissioner Skelitsky, welcome aboard. We're glad to have you. I wanted to give a bit of an update from CMU. It was shared with me. It was put in the news. They had a record-breaking fundraising year. CMU secured 79 million to advancing real-world learning. And they had their donors triple their fundraising record in support of students. Let's see, so great highlight there. Again, I'd like to thank city staff for their participation in the survey. Let's see, and I think that about does it for myself. In that case, that brings us to the end of announcements on city-related issues and new business. And we will move into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. So if you are a member of the public and would like to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please feel free to line up. Step up to the podium. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Cynthia Kilmer, 219 North Lansing Street. Let me see if that little clock.
Yeah.
Because I couldn't get carried away if I don't see it. Talk about Mount Pleasant Police again. Because I didn't finish telling all my stories because I had some vacations and whatnot and time slipped away. First of all, congratulations to our new City Commissioner Skelitsky. I want to bring up that Mount Pleasant Police Officers are mandatory reporters of abuse, or all police officers are. So if there's an abusive situation happening, like to a minor or to an elderly person, and the police respond to a call involving a minor or an elderly person, the police are mandatory reporters. And they forget that sometimes. And I'd like to give that little reminder out. In the case of that young teenage girl, the special needs teenage girl I was talking about last time I came here, the police became aware that she was a minor. She had just turned 17. They saw her state ID and they had been informed that she'd been living with this adult male for a long time. Rather than evicting her at 2:00 AM, they should have called social services because they were by law mandated to do just that. My understanding is that they threatened her that they would call social services. So apparently they understood that this was an option that was available to them. And in the police report, which I pulled, it says, you know, we told her that we could call social services. And what I say is, it's not that you could call social services, is that you must call social services. You don't release a minor at 2:00 in the morning and throw her out of her own home, not knowing where she's going or what's going on. You call social services. The next day, I started to prepare a very lengthy lawsuit against the city. I love the city, but I wasn't going to let that one slide. They violated her due process. They illegally evicted her. They, oh my Lord, I was going to ask for a really lot of money. And I, you probably don't know me, but I'm a lawyer, and I was going to get it. Now granted, your insurance company is going to pay for it and there might be some settlement or whatever, just like that how the Mount Pleasant schools had to cough up a whole bunch for that teacher who cut a kid's hair. I'm telling you what, I was going to get a hell of a lot more than that kid with a haircut. But the problem was, I spent two days working on this lawsuit, which I was going to file, and this poor little abused minor, well, you know, the man who used the police to get rid of her, you know, he spent the next two days begging her to come home and she did. So I ran out of a plaintiff. Now, this is all to the city's benefit because you didn't have to pay the massive amount of money I was going to ask for. But I don't know that that's mean, you know, that that's something you should congratulate yourselves for. This poor little girl who should have been referred to social services, who would have told them during any kind of kind interview that she'd been raped from the age of 14? She didn't get the money because you told her you loved her and wanted her to come home. Good for the city. Bad for the girl. You need to tell your police officers that they need to do their duties. They're mandated reporters. When they know there's an abusive situation going on, it's not that they could call social services, it's that they must. They need training on this. I witnessed another example. I only have 30 seconds, but a client of mine, who was an older male, was being bullied and threatened by his son. And he called the police when his, when his son said he was going to come over and kill him. The police showed up and again, it was mandatory referral that was supposed to happen. And it didn't. And I was there and I heard the whole interview. Y'all are going to get sued really bad. They need to do what the law says they need to do. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Fountain. I live at 811 South Franklin. I was just, I was really worried when you guys were talking about affordable housing. We do need some housing. It's ridiculous. We don't have any more land in this city at all for anybody. So we need to figure that out. The only thing I worry about is like down in Ann Arbor, they did a millage where the property owners did a startup for all the affordable housing. I just don't want that to happen here if we need money for like buying land or whatever. I don't want it to be on the property owners to buy that, if that makes sense. So just check it out. It did pass in Ann Arbor. So and now the property owners are buying land for affordable housing people to live in. So it's just kind of an interesting thing there, so. And on the chicken thing, I think we should have chickens. I have no problem with that. As long as they're contained right, taken care of, whatever. I don't want them, you know, running around on a leash somewhere. But, you know, you never know. People do what they do in their yard. But the ducks, no, I don't, I don't care for the ducks, so. Those are noisy, but the chickens, yeah, they're not a problem, I don't think so. But thank you.
Lou, my name is Joseph Carrion. I live on 109 North Arnold Street. And congratulations, Commissioners Skelitsky. Can I say that? Okay. You and I are in the same wavelength, I got to tell you. I'm glad I voted for you because I want, my first point I want to talk about is the possible untapped market of big box stores. Okay, so we, we understand that even though our city has abolished minimal parking, these companies have their own standards that they follow, right? No, no matter what we do, they're going to follow their standards. However, we're seeing companies like Walmart now, now that online shopping is getting crazier than ever, they're willing to reduce their new developments from six parkings per 1,000 square feet of building down to four parking to 1,000 square feet of. It would be detrimental if we lose a big box store in our town. And I think we can help them out by looking at the parking situation, saving them some money where they can. And we can utilize that land to build. And the second thing is on the biking ordinance. 100% glad you guys voted on all or nothing. Truly happy on that. I want to talk on something Commissioner Bush said in regards to utilizing your bike as a mode of transportation. And I just hope that in the education you guys are, are train, are educating everyone that the parks are not a throughfare, they are a destination and that we need to enforce that the streets are where you're, where you should be riding if you're utilizing your bike as a form of transportation to get somewhere. They should not be trying to get through the parks. That's the only thing I hope. And also, I hope this is a good time to probably make a, like a bike bus kind of situation. I don't know if you've heard of that, but there, there's a, some programs around the country where, you know, volunteers can get together and maybe have, like, instead of a bus picking up students to go to school, they, they gather a bunch of volunteers and they do a bike tour and all the kids get to ride to school on their bikes. And you can possibly do that once every other week. I am a, I work from home. My, my schedule can be changed. I, all I'm saying is I'm a willing volunteer if we can make this happen. And the last thing is a public announcement to just everyone out there. There is a, August 27th, 7:00 PM, right here, there is a zoning, zoning board for appeals for the gas station that they're trying to build at the intersection of Picker to Main. If you are supportive against it, we strongly encourage anyone to come to this meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience for public comment? Is there anyone online?
There's no one on Zoom and I, no emails.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will close public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. We have a work session still this evening on animals' ordinance to address raising chickens and ducks in city limits. Between now and then, is there interest in a recess before that?
Yes, ten minute.
Okay, in that case, we'll resume at 9:15. Okay. Um, in that case, we'll resume at nine fifteen. It is nine fifteen and we are gonna go start into our work session. Um, we have a work session on animals ordinance to address raising chickens and ducks in city limits. Manager Descent, if you'd tear us up, please.
Certainly. So, we currently don't have an ordinance that regulates the raisings, uh, the raising of chickens or ducks within the city limits. We do have our policy research intern Colton Brewer here to provide a very educational presentation on this topic with the goal of understanding if the city commission wants to put any regulations in place and to what extent. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Colton and he's gonna go guide us through this work session.
Everyone, thank you very much. Oh, need a pen. All right, here we go. So, um, one of the projects that Erin has assigned to me uh, is the, um, a little bit of research and recommendations regarding chickens and ducks in the backyard. So, a little overview of our discussion tonight. Um, so first thing, we're gonna talk about some current Michigan law, um, that will be statewide. Um, then I'm gonna bring up a little bit of a potential upcoming law, um, statewide again. Um, I have not seen any, any movement on that since I started this presentation, but it is working its way through, uh, the State House, uh, as last I checked. Um, next, we're gonna just briefly touch on farms as a public and private nuisance. Uh, I'll get to it, but there are elements that we should consider, although backyard chicken keeping does not constitute a farm. Um, next, some laws and ordinances of other Michigan cities and counties. Uh, I feel like that's a, a good spot for us to kind of, um, base our, our new policy, uh, around. Um, then I have some recommendations, uh, for our new ordinance, uh, and then right at the end, just some considerations for you, uh, while we're going through and specifying, uh, this, this new policy. So, to start, um, current Michigan law, most localities do allow backyard chickens. Most are anywhere between two and six hens, um, allowed on a half acre or less. And that does depend, uh, on the city and county. I have not found a single instance of a city or county allowing roosters, um, simply because of the noise. Um, some will allow more chickens on larger property. And most localities require some kind of, uh, permit, um, typically through the city clerk. So, for that upcoming law, um, there is, uh, some new statewide legislation to kind of standardize and regulate chicken keeping. Um, some of the proposals in there include a, uh, standard minimum property size of a quarter acre to keep chickens at all. Um, and that's just to allow, uh, enough space for the, for the chickens in the first place. Next, um, you can have up to five hens per quarter acre and you can have up to twenty-five hens. Um, so once you get to, let's see, what would, what would that be? Quick math. Uh, one and a quarter acres, that would be your, your twenty-five hens, and then anything larger than that landwise would not allow you, uh, more hens. Um, statewide prohibition on roosters. And then, uh, requirements for keepers to follow humane treatment and cleanliness standards. Um, to me, that's a fairly important element is whenever we're introducing, um, any kind of regulation around animals, we wanna make sure that we're, we're taking animal welfare into account on that. Uh, and that's not only in the cleanliness and the kind of day-to-day life of that animal, but also in how they're being treated. Um, any exterior conditions that could be, you know, questionable or potentially harmful to that animal. So, real quick, farms as a public or private nuisance, um, so the law on that is that a farm operation cannot be found to be a public or private nuisance if it conforms to, uh, current generally accepted agricultural management practices. Um, while backyard chickens are not a farm, some of those principles still do apply. Again, we wanna make sure that, um, we're taking care of the animals properly. We're not doing anything way out of the ordinary, anything like that. Uh, additionally, excessive noise, pollution, or odor, um, anything around that could be in a, a reportable offense, uh, because those can be indicative of non-adherence to those generally accepted practices. Um, so next, gonna run through some laws and ordinances of other cities and counties in Michigan. I'm gonna go pretty fast through these just because there is a lot of similarity. There's not really a whole lot of difference. It's just different levels of specificity. Um, but I'm gonna hit Ann Arbor, Grand Rapids, Eaton Rapids, and Claire. So, first, Ann Arbor, they allow up to six chickens or ducks, no roosters. You need a permit, uh, that's valid for five years and you get that from the city clerk. Uh, chi- chickens must be kept in a secured, um, fenced-off enclosure. Uh, that is a minimum of ten feet away from any property line and a minimum of forty feet away from any residential structure on an adjacent property. Uh, and Ann Arbor does also prohibit slaughtering chickens, uh, even on the owner's own property. Um, Grand Rapids, they require, um, or they, they allow up to four chickens on five thousand square feet of land or less. Uh, and if you have more than five thousand square feet of land, then you can have up to six. The minimum property size is thirty-eight hundred square feet to keep any chickens. Um, no more than two dwelling units on the property, uh, to keep chickens. Uh, if you're renting, you need written permission from your landlord, no roosters. Again, permit required, valid for three years. Uh, and as opposed to five for Ann Arbor. A couple more for Grand Rapids. Chickens can only be kept in the backyard, um, so no front yard. Um, just kind of keeping it out of the, out of the public eye, I guess, is, is the, the thought on that. Um, the coop and enclosure, uh, must have ade- adequate space for each chicken. Uh, can't exceed eight feet tall, um, or six square feet per chicken, um, for the coop specifically. Um, then the coop has to be at least ten feet away from any property line, seeing that one again. Uh, it has to be kept clean and secure from rodents and predators, and it cannot take up more than fifty percent of the backyard. Eaton Rapids, uh, allows up to four chickens across the board, uh, no roosters. Property must be a minimum of one acre to keep chickens. They also require a permit. I was not able to find a specific timeframe for that permit. Um, so not sure if they're going on, it's, you, once you get the permit, it's permanent, or if there is, there's some document that I was not able to find on that. Um, the primary use of the property has to be a, an occupied, single-family dwelling. Once again, no slaughtering on the owner's own property. Uh, chickens must be kept in an enclosed, covered enclosure, no smaller than three square feet, no larger than eleven. Um, which for four chickens is right around the range that you want it to be. Next, uh, for Eaton Rapids, the enclosure must be surrounded by opaque material so that, uh, it can, they cannot be seen from the outside. Uh, and they also require predator and rodent-resistant, um, fencing, not only for the enclosure, but also for the food. Um, cause you do not want any rodents getting into the food, cause then that becomes a problem for the neighborhood. You don't want predators around your chickens, cause they might get your chickens, be, then it's a problem for the neighborhood. Um, chickens can only be kept in the backyard. Once again, uh, enclosure must be a minimum of ten feet away from the residents on the property and a minimum of twenty feet away from the same on an adjacent property. Um, and they require that the enclosure is cleaned at least weekly. Um, I'm not sure what their enforcement structure is for that. Um, I would assume it's just a matter of, you know, like I was talking about before, odor, noise, anything that might be indicative of, you know, neglect. Did you have a question?
Oh, I didn't mean to make you stop your sentence, but I do have a question. Do you mean ten feet away from the property line?
No, no.
Or ten feet away from the residence?
On, for Eaton Rapids, it is ten feet away from the residence that is on the property.
Okay.
And then it is twenty feet away from, uh, the residence on an adjacent property.
Okay, thanks.
Of course. Um, finishing up Eaton Rapids real quick, um, any dead chickens need to be removed and disposed of immediately. Uh, that is a, that can become a public safety problem. Um, no piling of waste, uh, excessive odor is a violation. Um, before someone were to apply to get, um, a, a permit in Eaton Rapids, uh, their property needs to be inspected for compliance. Uh, and applications must include a site plan for the proposed chicken keeping area, including, um, all of the structures on the property, all the property lines, things like that. And then, um, after the permit, but before getting chickens, the enclosure has to be inspected by code enforcement or law enforcement. Then for Claire, um, permit is required again, five years. Um, there are private, uh, any private restrictions like deed restrictions or neighborhood, neighborhood association bylaws remain enforceable, so even though you are allowed to have chickens, if there's some kind of deed restriction, um, then that's a no-go. Um, you do need in Claire, written consent of adjacent property owners, um, with your application. Um, the application also must include a site plan, has to indicate existing structures on the property, location of proposed structures, location of waste storage areas, and, uh, waste disposal plan. Um, they don't allow more than two birds. Um, so either two chickens, two ducks, or one of each per property. Uh, and once again, no roosters. Um, the primary use of the property must be a single or two-family dwelling. Chickens must be kept in a covert, fully enclosed fence. Uh, chickens can only be kept in the backyard. Once again, enclosure must be a minimum of ten feet away from any property line, minimum of forty feet away from an adjacent properties, uh, dwelling unless given written con- consent by that. Uh dwelling unless given written con- consent by that adjacent property owner. Um all enclosures, feed storage must be rodent and predator resistant. Uh and then owners must present uh the their permit if requested by code enforcement or a police officer. So definitely some similarities there, tried to get through it as quick as possible. Um but next, just some recommendations, uh recommended clauses for the new ordinance. Um a lot of these recommendations did come from a little focus group that I held uh just to kind of, you know. Get a temperature check as far as how how I was doing on this. Um we kind of came up with permit for one to two years with an initial fee of a hundred and fifty dollars and a renewal fee of seventy-five. Um initial property inspection after the application, but before the applicant gets chickens. Semi-annual compliance checks. Um further inspections if reasonable suspicion of any neglect or poor treatment of the animals. Um penalty clauses, three strikes for minor offenses, immediate permit uh revocation if there is evident neglect or abuse. Um and we came to the determination that slaughter of the chickens or ducks. Should be allowed, but inside one's own home or garage. Keep it out of the the public eye, but you know, they're your animals. Some people are raising them for, you know, for food, so that is that is understandable. Um next, we came to the determination that selling um the produce of backyard chickens should be prohibited. Uh ultimately, that does come come down to all of you, but backyard chickens are not commercial chickens. It's not a commercial venture. Um it's more just for the fun of, you know, keeping chickens, also the benefit of fresh eggs in the morning. So on and so forth. Um chickens should be kept in a secure pen or coop um for pest and predator mitigation. Um again, we we say secure at certain points in in some of these pieces of legislation. There's not necessarily any any such thing as perfectly secure in this situation. Predators will find a way, rodents will find a way, but. When we say secure, what we're talking about is deeply buried heavy-gauge fencing. We're talking about sturdy construction for any structures that you're putting up for the chickens. Uh we're talking about complex locking doors so that, you know, a raccoon couldn't just like undo the lock and go in. Um we're talking about a solid roof to keep wild birds away from your chickens. Um gaps filled with small gauge mesh, um that helps against like mice and snakes and, you know, smaller, smaller uh pests. Then fully sealed locking um feed containers. Um predator response, we would have come through animal control, so if there were any reports or anything. Of predators, we would, we would want animal control on that rather than like the police. Uh next, we would want a uh coop minimum uh ten feet away from any property line. Minimum forty feet uh from any adjacent homes unless written consent is given by that adjacent property owner. Uh that's just kind of keeping pace with what other cities and and counties are doing. Um if renting, written permission from the landlord, of course. Um coops would be prohibited on properties with duplexes or multifamily homes, so. I'm not keeping chickens at my apartment, unfortunately. Um then coops must be cleaned weekly at a minimum, more as needed, and again, odor would be a concern there and if. There is any complaints about odor, then code enforcement or law enforcement would need to make contact with with that permit holder. Uh then last, just some considerations um for all of you. In specifying our backyard chicken-keeping laws, so. Will will we want a permit? And if so, how much do do we think would be good? Do do we allow ducks in this? Um are we gonna follow other cities' laws or kind of keep towards that that potential statewide? Legislation and just kind of get ahead of the curve on that, so we don't have to go back and change anything. Um what would our minimum property size be? What would our maximum number of chickens be? Uh any regulations on waste disposal, including any carcasses? Um will we allow using waste as mulch? Uh and then whether or not we want to allow slaughtering. If so, any regulation on on method or or uh placement? And then inspections, yes, no, if yes, any regularity. And then that's just my references, but I'm open to questions.
Just have a thought.
Yeah.
This would kind of put either Commissioner P- Pirschbacher or maybe um. A manager to sense on, but you're the only two that I could think of that have a big enough backyard. And would you even consider something like this?
I'd give it some consideration myself.
Um well, I have two large dogs that some people call dinosaurs. So I would not consider, I've owned chickens, have raised them many times in my lifetime. I would not consider doing it again, but I'm not against anybody. Having chickens.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bush?
I I have a sense of reluctance to have anything in the ordinance that involves getting. Permission from a neighboring property owner, just because that just seems like something that could cause problems down the line if properties change hands. And I'm just wondering if other like that that was.
That's, yeah, that's definitely a consideration. Um I didn't see anything explicitly talking about it other than. If it's closer than, you know, ten feet to the property line or closer than forty feet to the adjacent home. Um that you need written permission um to be put in with your application. I guess that's something that we could, we could probably figure out, uh you know, on one hand, we we could say, no, like if. If the only place you can put the the coop is a little too close to the adjacent home, then sorry. We could say that. On the other hand, we could say any agreements in in this specific case made by the previous. Uh adjacent property owner carry over to the the next property owner, but that could cause some problems. Um yeah, so that's that's something um that we can definitely kind of kind of look into and and try to try to specify.
In other communities, in, I'm trying to think if there's any other ordinances that we have. That have any kind of permission, like a structure like that. Do we have anything on record that like requires, ask people, like you need permission from your neighbors? Gotcha.
We we considered, we considered that as part of the natural.
Yeah, with the native landscaping, that was a consideration.
Similar conversation when we were talking about natural landscaping and we said against it.
Yeah, we set the boundaries to obey.
Okay, I I would say if if we've already decided against it in one situation, then it might be best to just stay. Stay the course with that. Um as far as like, you you know, cuz if if we were to say in in the natural land case. That we're not, eh we're not doing like a a permission structure, but then in this situation we are. And then all the complications that come with it, that that could cause a rub, I understand, you know.
Manager sense.
Actually, I was gonna say Director Loria and I are in a debate right now. He he believes we do have one, uh so he he's just going to look it up right now, though. I couldn't recall one, but he thinks there might be one.
Okay, yeah, let us know if you find one. Um I'm interested because I would be interested to know. How we would maintain that kind of system, like.
Yeah.
Like the documentation process and like this limitation of getting that permission.
Director Loria, maybe that's just if you're gonna have a loud rock and roll concert in your backyard.
Okay, yeah, Commissioner Bush.
I I also I I have some concerns about permitting, and I think like the more robust the infrastructure is to. Manage this system, like the more I can see that there is need for some type of permitting. But um it 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 looked, uh those original numbers looked a little high to me. What?
Not the same thing. Do in what?
Well, I I understand that there are, that that sometime, you know, things cost the city money.
Uh huh.
To manage, to en- enforce or whatnot, but the more complicated it gets, the more work that is.
Right.
And I did think that the permitting structure that was proposed seemed high to me.
No, and I totally understand that. That was just kind of a a ballpark that we came up with in that focus group I was talking about. Um that figure is completely movable to however, wherever you wanna put it. If you would prefer that the initial is seventy-five, let's say. And then renewals are fifty or, you know, anything around there.
Yeah, I mean, I was even thinking lower than that, but again, I don't know what um. I I don't know what it would actually cost, and we wanna, you know, keep that. Um but I I'm just a little afraid that that. So when we've done these, this sorts of kind of progressive. Ordinances before, we get a response from the public that says, you can't tell me what I'm gonna do on my land anyway, so I'm just gonna do it anyway.
Yeah.
And so the higher that fee is, the more likely that we're gonna get that kind of response.
Right.
And I just um, I just wanna kind of. Temper that as much as possible so that it can be perceived as an opportunity rather than a restriction.
Yeah, no, I totally understand. And again, that figure is completely movable. That was just kind of a ballpark that that we put together just to have a figure for you. Um could I just get a a temperature check of the whole commission on on pricing for the permit? Uh were we thinking closer to fifty, closer to a hundred for the initial?
See, and now I I agree with the one fifty.
Yeah.
As the initial and seventy-five is the renewal. If we're looking at a renewal in three years, through five years or whatever, because of the fact that we have to have. Um we have, we're looking at um the building inspector going out. We're uh, you know, the code enforcer, you know, going out, there's, and the time of. You know, you've got to bring in a spec plan, and if you're going to have chickens in your backyard, you're investing some money. You're not putting a cardboard box out there and putting a lid on it and putting a chicken inside. You're investing in some money because. I know that I have hawks that sit above in the trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have to wire the top, you have to wire the sides, you're looking at all of. You're probably looking at a chicken coop that could be up to a thousand dollars considering how much wood costs nowadays.
Yeah, depending on how fancy you wanna get.
Yeah, well, even just a box, you know, and you want, I'm assuming you want them to have some outside.
Yeah.
You know, so you have to be out, then you have to bury the wire, then you, you know, it's it's a lot. I've raised chickens before. It's a lot of money if you're going to do it right.
If anyone is interested, I do have some additional uh slides that I ended up deciding to just kind of. Set aside um just to get this this information out to you uh and not not bog down uh the entire presentation. If you'd like, I can, I can send this over to you and you you'll have access to all of the hidden slides, I believe, right, Erin?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if anyone would like that.
My thought was kind of in between what I've heard for a lower cost and keep the cost. I was thinking more like a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
I that that sounds a little bit more comfortable to me. A a hundred, and then were were you saying the reinspection were every two or three years or what was it?
What if, what, how about this? So I had initially put down just as as a placeholder. Permits from one to two years at that one fifty, seventy-five for a for a renewal. What if instead it were a a four-year or a five-year? A hundred dollars and then fifty for the renewal?
Yeah.
Is that a little, a little better?
No, I think the, I think the renewal should be a lot shorter time.
Okay.
I think, I think the inspections should be a bit closer. Cuz things change rapidly, so.
Like a two-year or three-year?
Two-year.
Yeah, two-year.
Yeah.
So two-year renewal?
Yeah, but a hundred and fifty is is a good place to start for the initial one. I mean, it weeds out the ones that are impulsive versus the people that are actually being serious about getting into this.
That's a good point, and we're probably gonna get those sort of.
Yeah.
Reactions no matter what we charge, I just. I could just hear it already.
It's like giving your kid a bat rabbit for Easter, and by the end of the year, you're having to give it to animal control cuz. You know, neglect, you know, becomes.
Right. Then um another, another quick question, just as far as um. Any kind of um like check-ins with code enforcement or or law enforcement, do we want to require that? Or are we thinking just on a on an on an as-needed basis for that?
Can you clarify your question? I'm sorry.
Like, so obviously, before you get chickens, there would be an, there would be an inspection.
Inspection, is that what you're saying?
Are we requiring like a s- a a biannual inspection?
Vice versa.
I um uh I am, this is a conundrum for me. Okay, no, seriously, I grew up with chickens. My father had all three, so I understand. And I'm thinking about, you know, what you have not talked about are the other implications. Health issues, Indian people, a whole range of things. Of course, you don't want roosters, right? And chickens smell when people don't take care of their, you know, whatever it is, hen. Shit, so, sorry. Uh when, you know, if people don't take care of their pens, yes. It can be, I mean, it stinks like, you know, when you're driving down, uh what is it, highway. One twenty-seven south in the summer, and that pungent thing hits you. So and I'm thinking about that. You know, I I understand why, you know, that people wanna do this, and I'm thinking. First, we have complaints about deer and turkey, and now we have to deal with chickens again. I don't know, I honestly do not know. Um you know, um I. I if you were to ask me, I'm thinking the one fifty is low. I wanna go higher, so that those people who are really serious about it can just, yeah, let's, you know. If you're not serious about it, don't do it. You 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 know, one fifty. And then renewable every three years at seventy-five, that's low for me. Considering the, you know, the implications, somebody has to go in there and check all of that. Yes, I do like the idea of having uh uh, you know, applying for permit. Um you know, it's a health hazard for me, so somebody, you know, we should be able to have some inspection. And I'm worried about that. Um call me a cynic or whatever it is, but. I'm just simply. For, you know, for somebody who has to deal with deer and turkeys on my property all the time.
Yeah.
Adding check into all of this complicates the situation, all right? You know, and that's what I'm saying. And yeah, yeah, and and apart from the fact that people wanna have, you know, meat that they grow, whatever it is that, you know, however they see it. There are health considerations also, and I don't know that we have talked about that.
I, so just to, just to point out, I did have a slide on that initially. Um I ended up hi- just hiding that slide. It is still available in this slideshow. Um but again, just just so I could get kind of through the the bulk of the information, I I do have that extra information. If anyone would like the the PowerPoint to review.
Um Commissioner Skolinski.
Um yes, my my initial thoughts are, um as of right now, we don't have anything on the books and. I couldn't tell you why the chicken crosses the road because I don't see chickens all over Mount Pleasant. Um I mean, as of right now, I could have two dozen in my backyard and there's nothing the city could do about it, but nobody is raising. Dozens and dozens of chickens. Um not only that, but like was, like was brought up by um Commissioner Pirschaber. It is not inexpensive to build a chicken coop. So if you're going to be investing uh eight hundred to a thousand dollars to build a chicken coop, you are obviously already have some skin in this game.
Yeah.
Um so to try to punish people with an exceedingly high uh. Cost to to just be able to apply and try to get a permit for chickens seems unnecessary. Um I feel like if we are trying to hurt people for having an interest in having chickens. It it doesn't do any good and it defeats the purpose of putting any type of ordinance in place in any way, shape, or form. Um I I personally feel like the cost associated with the permit should reflect the cost of. Operating uh such an ordinance, making sure that it is being inspected and up to snuff initially. Um so yeah, maybe a higher um permit cost at the beginning to make sure there's an inspector going out there. That it's so far away, so on and so forth. After that's been built, it doesn't seem like it would cost all that much to have somebody come and, oh, yeah, hey, it's still cleaned up. We're good to go.
Well, yeah, and that's the thing, especially if you're talking about like a, like a semi-annual, like every six months or so. Most likely, generally speaking, assuming that there's not something insanely wrong with. With the the conditions for the chickens. The inspector's gonna walk on, see that it's it's clean, see that it's not falling apart. The inspector's gonna walk on, see that it's, it's clean, see that it's not falling apart, and then probably, you know. Shake hands and be on their way, right?
So, yeah, with, with all these ideas in mind, um, for somebody to be able to call into animal control and be like, hey. There's an ungodly smell coming from my neighbor's backyard. I think it's chickens. And to have their permit pulled off for uh negligence. Um, for putting the chickens in a, you know, for not being a good chicken owner. To have that permit pulled and be out of the cost of the, the, the pen itself, the cost of the permit. And then have to pay on top of that to take care of the chickens and rehome them.
Now that.
I feel like that deterrent to keep somebody from being a bad actor.
Sorry, just, just to be clear real quick, a- as far as the um, the revoking permits. That would only be if there was like very evidently like serious neglect or anything like that. That wouldn't just be like, oh, we got an order complaint, but we go there and the chickens are fine. That's, that would be an overreaction on, on the city's part.
Right, but if the, the option is there, if the danger is there that they could have their permit removed by not taking proper care. Somebody's gonna be apt to make sure they're cleaning out their pens, I feel.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I wanna, I'm gonna respond. I wanna correct something. I didn't say hurt. It's a, my point is use the word to hurt somebody by, you know, having uh a high, high. You know, high, um, what is it? Permit cost? No, what I'm saying is I don't know, I'm paying attention to their health, you know, issues. I'm also cognizant of the fact that we have to send somebody out there on an alley, you know, to go monitor this. Is it gonna cost the city money? Yes. If you build twenty-five bucks or fifty bucks, will that cover that? I don't think so. You're gonna send out a health inspector, somebody has to do all that paperwork. As you've all proposed, a hundred and fifty dollars initially is not a bad amount. I was saying that left to me, I would make it two hundred and then renewal is one hundred. But I'm okay with a hundred and fifty and, you know, seventy-five renewal. It's not hurtful. If somebody is going to take on this, what, you know, one, ha- it is a huge responsibility. Not only to the person or the individual, but also to the city and, you know, your neighbors. Wait a minute, are we thinking about our neighbors or just simply us because you want to eat some, you know, what is it? Um, fowl?
Eggs.
Fowl and eggs. Wait, you have neighbors too. So we need to be considerate. We're thinking about the health of the neighbors. I'm thinking of the health of the neighbor, neighborhood. I'm thinking of the, you know, health concerns. And that's why I'm saying what I'm saying. If people want to do it, that's fine, but I'm not gonna do it. But I'm just gonna say that for me, it is problematic. And that's what I'm articulating here. I am not trying to be punitive. I am genuinely concerned because I have been to places where. People have been raising chicken and then you've got an outbreak of all sorts of, you know, bird flu or something and then what? That's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Commissioner Bush.
I, I guess I kind of have two parts. It's a follow up to both the last commissioner's statements. First of all, I think maybe it would be beneficial if we saw the slide that addressed. And then um additionally, oh my gosh, I'm so tired, I'm gonna forget. Oh, I really liked what your proposed ordinance talked about in terms of like a three strikes type policy. Um, I think that, but I, I definitely think that's gonna need, that's probably gonna need to be the most, one of the most specific parts of the policy.
Yeah, what is a strike?
What is strike? And then what is a?
What is an immediate revocation?
Yeah, because I, I agree with uh Commissioner Skolitsky that that alone. Should be like a, you know, weed out the people who are impulsive, da, 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 that sort of thing. If we are clear and um. Yeah, if we were very, very clear about that from the beginning.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, and I, are there, I didn't notice that. Piece in other um. Um, ordinances in other cities or is that just simply because of what, it didn't end up being addressed in your slides?
No, I, I summarized like top to bottom, all, uh, all four of those. It was not, it was not.
So that was not in there, okay, cause I think that sounds like.
That's interesting.
A really good one.
Um, question for rest of the commissioners. Um, my, the question was raised about um slaughtering of animals. Um, my initial reaction to that um was, I, I, I don't think that's something that should, we should be all, uh, should be allowed. My concern would primarily, primarily be of like it being in sight of other members of the community, neighbors or anything. That's my initial gut reaction. We have members of the commission who've raised chickens more frequently, um, and have more experience on that. I'm interested to hear the other thoughts of members of the commission because I'm, I'm open to changing, but that's just my gut reaction as I'm thinking about that, so.
My, my comment is, um, I had some friends that had chickens. They don't live in Mount Pleasant, but they would bring me a dozen every now and then. And so I saved the cartons to give back to them. And they said, no, our chickens are so old, they're not laying eggs anymore. So there's gonna be a time span where you might need to get rid of your chickens and get new ones. Is that true?
Yes. Yeah, that, that, that's what I was, I mean, that, that's why I think the allowance for, you know, inside the house. Inside the garage does make sense because it's, it, that alone would address a health issue, I think.
But then how to get rid of it? You don't put it in your garbage.
No, no.
You can, you can can them.
Well, the thing is, is if you are raising chickens for meat, you don't raise six chickens. Right? You raise, you raise a lot of chickens for meat. You raise twenty-five to fifty chickens if you're raising them for me. If you're raising them for eggs, six, five, six chickens. Is enough for eggs for a family of four. Um, but chickens do get old, just like all creatures on earth. And when they start getting old, they do not lay as much. A lot of times you can take them, you can put them in a pen, take them down to the Amish and the Amish will take care of them for you. Um, they will butcher them for you or you can do it yourself. I would always suggest that you take it to a farmer that does it for you.
Yeah, but that is, that is also perfectly acceptable as, as an option as far as the ordinance goes. We can, we can regulate that. You can't do it on your property, but if the need arises, you can take that chicken somewhere.
Yeah, and if we allow them to slaughter them on their property, we would have to give them the guidelines of what does slaughter mean. It doesn't mean getting out your shotgun and shooting them as they're running through the yard, kind of stuff, right?
Right.
We want it, we want to make sure that it's done correctly. That's why I always, always suggest that you would take them to the Amish. They will take care of them for you, they'll clean them for you and they'll give them back to you for a cost.
I don't think it's a priority to have, to have that option available to, you know, backyard chicken keepers at all. I thought it was interesting that it was proposed at all as a possibility, but um, yeah, maybe that could be something that would be addressed. If the community expresses interest in it, but right now maybe.
Well, I think it's more just kind of the question of like if we invite people to have chickens. Eventually, the question is gonna be like, do they slaughter that chicken? So like, as we're working on this process, that's where that question comes up for me. Like, so I, I think at the least setting the guidelines of like, I mean, defi- defining slaughtering, um, def- or, and like also space that it's in. So like if it's out of the public eye, I think I'd be more okay with that as also as an element of it. But I just wouldn't want someone walking down the street and.
Absolutely not. So, hey, Bill, how you doing?
Tripling down the.
Yeah. That, that's an excellent.
Traumatize the whole community.
Yeah.
That's it.
That's.
This might bring our conversation more towards a close.
Yeah.
But if we can say to Colton, we like your ideas, we've given you a little bit of feedback. And maybe, I know we don't make decisions at work sessions, we just get information. Um, but maybe to bring it back another time so we can discuss it, maybe have a public hearing. And maybe, fine, maybe get something on, on the books.
You know, talking about that, um, I just had a brief conversation with Commissioner um Rollins about that, about just our public hearings. I was wondering if there's a way, and like maybe like this might take some research. But if we could put public hearings earlier in the process of like approving the ord- of like creating an ordinance. A lot of times what we've been seeing recently is like we get a lot of public feedback right at the end. Like if they're like, either like if we could work on like examining, like having public or hearings earlier in the process. Separate from the, like the final approval maybe. Um, or even like if we created a couple, like a public comment period of like, hey, like we're next thirty days. Send us your thoughts on chickens, like we want to hear it. But like, again, like I feel like the, the public will probably want to have some kind of input on this and everything. There's a lot of different thoughts out there. But I guess your thoughts on that?
Certainly a possibility. I don't see anything that prohibits the city commission from holding public hearings just to get feedback and those kind of things. As far as the approval process goes, I'd have to review our charter just to make sure that. There's no restrictions between public hearing and when the ordinance is adopted and I can get that information back to the city commission. But the city commission wants to design some sort of a public input process on this in advance of consideration. We can always set that up.
Okay, gotcha. I feel like chickens are a low enough stake process to, there is um, to test the grounds on that. For like potential like new ways to solicit public permits. I think that would be um, something that could work there.
Awesome.
So if you, if you have any thoughts on that, you already did a focus group. If you have other thoughts on like bringing like soliciting public feedback.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I will just point out, uh, my time with my internship, he's running, running close. Um, but yeah, over the next, over the next day or so, I'm gonna be re- rewatching this. I'll start getting another presentation going and. Kind of see where that leads us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one more question. I've had some friends' children show uh test positive for Lyme disease over the last couple of years. My understanding that chickens uh will eat a lot of insects, including ticks.
Yes, they do.
Uh, is it possible to get some information on that uh during for the next presentation?
Yeah, I think I actually have a little bit in this presentation, but I can get a little more for you as well.
That'd be appreciated, thank you.
At least if it decides to open.
You were gonna forward those slides on to us?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send that over. Um, and then.
The one thing I remember, the chickens eat everything. Just everything. They'll eat their own eggs.
Yeah.
They will eat everything.
Everything.
Awesome. Well, yeah, I'll, I'll get this sent over to everyone. There is a little bit of information as far as like them eating insects. Um, I can definitely find some more information on that and I'll get that uh in, in the next presentation.
Okay.
Of course, thank you all.
Um, there being no further business before the commission at this time. I adjourn us at ten o'clock.
Here we go. Chicken eating.